And then, you know, I, I can continue to try and, you know, I negotiated with April on, on that amount down to a thousand dollars. Ten percent is typically like a de minimis indirect charge for those types of activities. Yeah, and they also have served as a, as a fiscal sponsor. This isn't their first time doing this. Um, but it does incur a certain cost on, on their admin. Um, and so I just wanted to add that in that they've routinely done this for, for upcoming uh organizations and this isn't a, a new thing for them.
I wanna, during a break, I wanna be able to read this one thoroughly before we vote on it.
So, do we want to?
We can either take a break or whatever you want to do. I just need, I need to be able to focus to read it.
We'll have to do the, probably after the nine thirty because we have to.
Okay.
You wanna hold it until the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it could wait till the end of the meeting, can't it?
That's fine.
Just do it then, okay? All right, yeah, that'll give me a chance. I wanna look at it. You'll give me a copy of the MOU also.
I'm sorry, that's it.
That, this is the MOU that I was looking at? Okay, that's like, cause it read like an MOU, but it just didn't say MOU. All right. Yeah, and Anthony will be back after ten o'clock, so, you know, we can have him take a look then too.
All right, so we're gonna hold off on this until the end of the meeting.
That specifically, you have another agenda item.
He's got number one on there. Oh no, which one? Which, which one is that?
The power.
The number one, the power planning grant proposal? Yeah, you got this.
So, the, the, the planning proposals that you have in the board packet that Amy provided you, that's the one that we are supposed to be submitting? That's as it stands currently. We're still working on getting some of that dialed in. That's due on the sixteenth. It's an electronic submission. It does require an authorized official to go ahead, or authorized representative, pardon, to push the submit button, basically. And so, John, we can get together on Saturday the sixteenth in the morning, or you can authorize me to just go ahead and push that button on behalf of the commission.
But this is the same grant, though, the, that, that, the other, so let's just wait until the end of the
Yeah, end of the meeting.
um, meeting, because I wanna review the administrative document that goes with it. But, um, but we'll, I mean, we'll vote on it today. We just, I just need time to look at, at that agreement.
Noon, I have my, my second. I believe so.
I'm sure Suzy can answer these questions.
All the information is in this packet right here. And the, the application in your.
Okay. Awesome, thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a couple minutes. Tom, you need a break?
Yes, please.
Take a quick break.
Uh, we're gonna take a quick break before we go to the nine thirty one. Angela, did you get a phone call this morning? Okay. Uh, possibly. Okay.
Check, check my email, John. See if anybody said anything yet.
Angela, can you bring me the sign in sheet, please? You made sure everybody signed in? I just wanna see. We're missing one. Who did you sign in there for? Sheriff? You're quiet today. LeFond, you didn't drive down this morning, did you?
Uh, no, I was in Charleston yesterday.
Okay. All right. Say that's. Yeah, that's a long drive early in the morning.
You outta here, Mike?
Yeah, we got train going on.
How's, how was the softball game Wednesday night?
They, they split.
They split?
Yeah.
That's good.
Is she pitching any or on base percentage?
It's, it's higher than that. She's batting like three thirty-three, three forty-something.
Well, she's got a long ways to go, isn't she? I'm just messing with you, Mike.
Sixty foot.
I got seventy on base percentage.
Sixty foot at the time. And the guys are ninety foot at the time, so.
I'll tell you what, I, I went against Scott. Or, I, I went against Scott through ninety-two or ninety-three. I went two for three against him. Only one got hits in the game. And, uh, when that ball come down, he threw sidearm. You can tell when the guy throws over ninety, because it looks like an egg.
Yeah.
Looks like an egg. When you see an egg coming at you, you know you have a bad day unless you know what you're doing.
Yep. There was a guy that pitched for Leo Grand, Ohio. And he threw, he threw consistently ninety-two, ninety-four.
It's got.
What'd you need?
A stapler. I thought we had two or three.
Well.
Is this for me?
We did.
I just, and well, and I just bought a couple because all the ones that I've been using have disappeared as well.
Okay, I might, I might copy that. What is that? Ah. I have this one already. Yeah. One of those peppers you grow. I know how your family is. Oh, Angela, you can put this back. Thank you for bringing it up.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it. Those hot peppers. Did you see that the libraries are losing money too? It's gonna get worse. Two or three streets. I mean, you still have to learn how to do research. I mean, if, if you, I'm gonna tell you what.
Well, my, my boys anytime I make something, bam, they're all on the fine research. You can research anything.
Well, but that's, that's the part what they're providing is, is kids that don't have access to that.
All right, welcome back, everybody. Alicia, would you like to speak to the, uh, Planning Commission recommendation post?
Alicia, Angela.
And then Commissioner Luisis wants to take over from there.
Certain thing we have to do, and y'all take it.
Um, so you guys had, um, it was a published notice that quite needed to remain on the agenda. At nine thirty, um, there was an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, the Route nineteen corridor management attachment. And it was also, or quite a couple come from the Planning Commission for amending the section nine thousand five of the development. As you well know, we didn't have quorum, so that meeting has to be postponed. So you guys, I don't know if you make a motion to table it or postpone. I'm not sure. So, the, um, it has already been published in the paper. The next hearing for the, um, Planning Commission will be on, that day, it's gonna be May tenth, and then you guys will do that recommendation on May twenty-first.
We had to postpone this till May twenty-first.
At ten AM, I believe that's the time it's on the agenda.
So, we do, we make, need to make a, a motion to do that?
We do, and then also, I know Angela sent us an email because we had issues with, um, several board members. We didn't have quorum because several board members didn't attend, and she was able to vet who didn't attend and why, and give us some input. And I think, um, for May seventh, well, shoot, maybe even April twentieth, we might need to take a look at that, put that on the agenda and discuss whether there's anybody who, who, um, we might wanna invite to resign or remove for cause based on the email. It seemed like a couple people had some seriously legitimate issues, like people are sick or, you know, something like that. But, but it looked like one or two people, um, aren't able to regularly fulfill their obligation. And, and we had a, you know, a pretty good turnout for a pandemic, and, um, we weren't able to conduct any business, which is too bad.
Is there any way we can do it with Zoom? They can do it with Zoom next time in case?
I'm not, I mean, we have to look into the problem. Zoom is Memorial Building. I don't know how to echo real bad.
Yeah, and there's, there's really no good solid connection.
What time is the, um, meeting on the tenth?
It is two.
Again.
You guys can, I mean, according to the ordinance and the bylaws, the commission can always change that, but there's a procedure to change the time. You do have to remember in May, twice, they're gonna have to meet the Monday before, because I already have three resounding here. In order to get this in, it's from like one in June.
Hmm.
Um, so the Planning Commission members, they're actually gonna have to do two meetings a month. So it's very important that they, we have to want to propose those meetings since the May third, there is a couple of businesses that wanna open up the first of June, so really, my concern is that people are there and I don't wanna pull up a business.
Well, that was one of the restructurings. I wanted to talk about time that we have to, not only these meetings, but for future meetings.
Yeah. I agree with that. I mean, we had a lot of feedback where people wanted to, I mean, we, especially these ones like on compliance, I, you know, we definitely need to have hearings where people can.
Yeah, and that's just, you're got, you guys would direct the Planning Commission to change times. I mean, that's the County Commission. They set it back in two thousand seven to be two o'clock, but it does end up, or as directed by the government officials, which means you guys. So, going forward, you guys can change it. I didn't wanna change this meeting time because it was gonna, I have to advertise in the paper legally thirty days in advance. I don't wanna hold this off any longer.
I agree.
Okay.
Make a motion to postpone ours until May twenty-first?
Yes.
You just have to do two, because it's two different, I think you might have to do, there's two different items. One is the Comprehensive Plan and one is UDC, so.
Well, we have them as the same agenda item, but, um, either way, um, so you're moving to postpone the UDC code section nine thousand five and the amendment to Comprehensive Plan decision till May twenty-first?
Yes.
And I second that motion.
Yep.
I seconded it. I just articulated it for him.
All right. Okay, we have a proper motion and second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Properly moved.
Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Well, we don't know what time it'll be.
She had, she said, said at ten o'clock, so.
Oh, ten o'clock, okay.
Well, no, the Planning Commission meetings will be at the Memorial.
On May tenth.
They do is stay here and then they bring a recommendation, so May tenth, that will be at Memorial Building, but the County Commission meetings will be here.
The May tenth meeting is at two PM. And then the May twenty-first meeting will be at ten, here.
My turn, John? Yeah, is, well, wait there, did we take care of both of these?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, I think you just have to do two lines, because it's two different things.
Okay, all right, cool. I'll make sure we did, is it?
Yeah.
Is Gabe, can we get Gabe down here? We actually need him down here for the nine thirty-five.
Yeah.
Gabe, we need you down here.
Oh, that's what all these are about.
Yeah. And, Abby, please make sure you take notes for Gabe on this.
I'm sure he'll be down. He said he'll be here tomorrow.
Should've just told him to stay here. I mean, I, I thought he was going to. I never paid any attention, you know?
Sometimes he's a little snake.
But, I hate to get into, I was gonna go ahead and talk about something else, but I hate to get into it and he comes down here.
Yeah, 'cause it's the nine thirty-five.
Well, actually, we talked about the, uh, potential new amendment, but I mean, I guess we waiting with him. He should be right.
And we do have a public notice on the face, on the, not Facebook, but.
I've never seen it, okay, I haven't ever seen it, but I'll go back and look. I'll, I'll check.
That way you already just check, I mean, it's in the papers. Say it, Montgomery Herald, and then the registered.
Hey, Gabe?
Yes, sir.
Are we ready?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Uh, the resource coordinators, from what the, the process, what I understand, the Resource Coordinators Office, or you, I believe, are supposed to do reviews, uh, to the Planning Commission. Did you have any reviews?
I have the one that I did, I've only done one in my time as resource coordinator, and I did put that, give that to Amy for the board packet.
That one I don't recall. Which one was it?
Would be the driving.
The driving theater.
Did you know it?
No, that could give you a hard time.
Just, but so the other commissioners know, back in two thousand ten, the Planning Commission and the County Commission, instead of how, any time you have a resoning, a new business or any type of text amendment to anything UDC, used to be the transition team, which was fourteen members, would look at the plan and they would write a recommendation and then give it to the Planning Commission. One of the things we're looking at possible issues is now, that went from fourteen members in two thousand ten to just one, one person in the, on the resource office, so. He has to do reviews on any type of.
Well, the reason is, I, but that's the only one you've done.
It's the only one that I've done. I have, I have records in, in SharePoint of all the ones that have been done since two thousand fifteen.
Okay, well, the, the one to the Planning Commission for the, uh, what we sent, sent down to them for the, uh, US Route nineteen corridor management plan. Did you, do you have anything on that?
No, that, that, that never came, well, I did not get, no, I did not make any comments on that.
See, this is one of the things too, I wanted to talk about in the restructuring, is do we wanna keep it to where it goes up the resource office? Because I'm, I'm not harping on to Gabe, but really, the process hasn't been done correctly anyway.
Sure.
And we can, and.
And this was prior, it's not just Gabe.
Right. And we can change this. This is stuff that we can change the process. Is that correct?
Yeah, like I said, the, in two thousand ten, they removed the whole group, it was a whole separate group of people. They were business people, it was fourteen members. I don't have their names because it was prior to me, but they were fourteen people, and then they decided to remove the word transition, and that review that's supposed to come to the Planning Commission is all in the resource office.
Now, I wanna ask a question on that. Can it come to the commission? And then the commission send it recommendations and writing something up, and then send it to the Planning Commission?
That may be a little hairy because you guys make the final decision. Do it, I mean, just personally.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I would think it would be better for either to stay with the resource office or, or create a whole new review. Only thing is, if you're gonna make the final decision, your review may be by, I'm, I may be wrong.
That's a little bit of an ethical.
Yeah.
Yeah, that may be a little hairy.
Well, can we put, can we put another board together?
Yeah, I mean, you guys, if there was a transition team a long time ago.
Put a transition team together. What's the minimum, uh, uh, people that you can have on it?
I think it's five fifteen, it's normally the standard. I mean, that's just an option. I know that, you know, with everything the resource grants and things like that, our code says that that review was supposed to be a part of, of its own. So either A, we can get rid of that completely, or we can just figure out.
So, how would we get, go about changing that?
It would be a text amendment, just like you're dealing with the route. I mean, it'd be the same, that any time you do a change to the UDC, the Planning Commission looks at it, and then you guys make the final.
Well, I wanted to bring that up to the commission.
Is that process, um, in code, or is that a county?
The review is, is a county.
About the change, any change to the UDC, all this, we have to go through, is that a county?
That's, it comes from the state.
So that's a state.
Yeah, any time there's, it goes through the Planning Commission.
So if you have a UDC, that's how you have to do it?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the review board and the commission, they can.
That is a commission thing. That's something that way back in, I guess, the sixties decided that.
We have the right.
Yeah, you have, you can make a new one, you would just have to add the definition of whatever you're gonna call it.
And this might be, you know, as we discussed later today about, you know, our, our strategic plan and everything, if we decided to develop a Economic Development Authority or something.
Right.
That might be the right vehicle for that, and that's, those are set up by code. It's, it's in the same code that the URA is in. They have limited ones, they have, um, URAs, and then there are EDAs, which is what NRG RDA is. It's an EDA. So, it's just a regional one, but we could set up a county one if we, if we felt that there was a need, and that would be the proper, that would be a good application of, you know,
Right.
good thing to use them for.
Right.
You know, 'cause I know we, we've all, like, trying to talk, we might have a need for something like that as we're trying to move forward on this, on all this.
Okay, well, I wanted to talk about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then we talked about some changing things in the UDC, and that's one thing I do think that instead of one set of eyes, if you think it would be good to have five sets of eyes come up with their opinion on your business.
And it would be something bring with the commission, and if it enters Economic Development, uh, uh, I mean, I, I like it.
But state code does say that you can do a memorandum of understanding. If you had a regional board, you could do a memorandum of understanding, so they could intercept each other. So it could be a transition team, it could be an Economic Development Council, it could be just another set of eyes, so.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah. We should, we should take a look, because some of them have different requirements. Like, if we set up an EDA, it's gonna be having these kind of meetings. If we set up a team, I don't know what all the rules and all the, you know, implications of how they can meet and what kind of flexibility they have and that kind of stuff. But, but I think an EDA might be in order. I just wanna make sure we're not duplicating anything the NRG RDA does.
Now, the other thing I wanted to talk about, so, and, and maybe it needs to be explained a little better. Maybe John can, wanna, do you wanna explain Comprehensive Plan? Or, I mean, I, what I wanted to say is, I, I'll go ahead and ask Angela, let her do it then. The amendment, the US Route nineteen corridor, so everybody's clear on the way its process is and what it is. Correct me if I'm wrong, Angela. The US Route nineteen corridor management plan is an amendment added to the Comprehensive Plan.
Kind, okay, so just wanna give you a time frame. We had Comprehensive Plan way back in the sixties. In nineteen ninety-eight, they created the Route nineteen corridor management plan, which is a thing that we think that might need to be amended. So that's its own separate document. In two thousand and one, they created the whole new big Comprehensive Plan. They took that Route nineteen corridor management plan and attached it to the Comprehensive Plan. So the Route nineteen is technically before our new Comprehensive Plan was working today. So it is an attachment to the Comprehensive Plan, just to clear that up. It's not changing the whole Comprehensive Plan. It's just changing the attachment that was done in nineteen ninety-eight.
Now, the commission has the right to amend or change, amend certain parts of the Comprehensive Plan anytime at once.
State code, yeah, it's a state code section eight, I can get the exact, but at any time there is an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan after it's been adopted, you have to go through, uh, the Planning Commission would then make the recommendation to the County Commission, but I think after speaking with Anthony, you guys have the final say. What is in, am I correct on my answer?
Yeah, my reading of the code is you do have to go through the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission ultimately makes a recommendation, but then the County Commission can accept, reject, or come up with its own, um, solutions or whatever the issue is.
Okay, so if a property owner, for the heck of it, I'm, I'm throwing something out there, just, just for the heck of it. If a property owner comes to the commission and requests his property to have an amendment, the, the way it's structured on his property, and it be amended, could he do that? And the County Commission making recommendation to the County Planning Commission, and then they come back in the process, can be the same way on separate pieces of property?
So if a property, and I just wanna make sure, so if a property owner comes to one commissioner, all three, and they want to rezon their property?
Yes.
Okay.
Rezone it, go ahead.
If it would be, what's the definition is change in land classification, that's the.
Okay.
So basically, you guys could make the recommendation to me, tell me that property owner, blah, 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 wants to rezon their property. You make it me, they still have to come up with a site plan on what type of business presented to the Planning Commission. They still have to give you guys a recommendation on if they wanna rezon it or not, and, but you guys still do have the ultimate decision, because you're accepting or rejecting whatever the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Now, I'm sure there's an appeals process. If you guys don't agree with plan, I'm sure there is some type of appeal that somebody could file to appeal your guys' decision.
Now, if, if the County Commission also wants to take out a certain section that's under the, the, uh, US Route nineteen corridor management plan and overlay, they can even do certain sections, the commission. Certain sections out of that part.
It would still be the whole property. You still have to go through, you can't cut out the Planning Commission. They still have to make a recommendation.
Right, right, but what I'm trying to get at, so people understand, we're not changing the Comprehensive Plan. The commission can request amendments to anything they want as part of that Comprehensive Plan.
Yes, after it's adopted, and then that's why every ten years, the, you know, public notice in general gets involved. But if there's, through that ten year period, if you guys feel as though the economy's changing or something has made, you guys can any kind of request, it's just the process. It's a, it's a legal process.
So, I mean.
But it all, it all is through public notice. There is no backdoor. I mean, you guys have a public notice that's put in the paper. I need commission is public notice, and then your guys' final decision is also public notice. That's why it's put in the paper.
Yeah, I just wanna try to make it clear, we're not changing the Comprehensive Plan. You can amend any part that they want to. I just wanna make sure people understand that. Because I think it's been, been misunderstood in the way it's been going about. So, we can put another amendment in if we want to today. I mean, I'm not saying today. We could, we could make the change right now. We could do one every commission meeting if we wanted to.
If you feel that, yeah.
If we feel that we want to, we could do that.
But you, yes, and just everybody knows, you still have to do, every, at least every ten years, you have to update the whole entire plan, that state code. But you guys at any point in time, especially, you know, if things change, you guys can make those changes. It's just a whole new process. I mean, you just have to make sure we follow the steps. But yeah, the Comprehensive Chan, Plan will still have a ten year update by the end of this year.
And, and getting to the last part with the, with the, that Ms. Taylor's already mentioned a couple of them about maybe some of the board members or anything. I'm not harping on the, the Planning Commission. It's, it's a, you know, we are making changes. It is, it is big. Uh, they haven't been through any changes like this commission is, is doing right now. So, I'm not harping on them, but even, uh, the ones that want to make sure that they're there for the meetings is very important to us. Important to the county. So, uh, maybe even changing the amount of the, uh, the board members. Just taking.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you can change, I mean, what did, back in the sixties, there was only five people on the Planning Commission. Just through the years, state codes has become five and fifteen, so you guys, I think there's an order you have to do to, if you did choose to change the members. And then, of course, removing members, I think you can remove them if they're connected. And then, of course, removing members, I think you can remove them if they're connected, you can request them to resign.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, I, I do have, do you have something?
I, I was just going to say, I think we should consider that in conjunction with whatever we do as far as the, an EDA or whatever and figure out if we do need that many because we're going to solicit participants if we did create an Economic Development Authority.
Yeah.
You know, we might not need as big a group for the planning piece of it. I want to just de-conflict and make sure that we, you know, we might be able to, you know, get some people who were previously on planning to, you know, be a, a part of the other board if we create something.
Good. Uh, also wanted to make you yourself and Gabe aware that the commission is one part, uh, going from area to area to area. We may do more than, we're not going to do less than four, however, we could do more than four meetings across the entire county.
But starting the comprehensive plan early.
Yeah, yeah, we do want to start it early and, and I think we need to do more than four. I don't think the four areas covered everything, I think we need to go to the communities. If, at a minimum, the municipalities. But I think we just need to take a look and make sure we're out there and, and, and everybody has access to them. We do it at a time, a day where people, people could come and, and meet with us and give us their input for the comp plan. But we're going to do that not only just for the, the comp plan, but just in general terms to give them access to us to see, you know, what kind of input they have in their own economic development so we can, you know, to inform our priorities, reach community.
You guys may want to, is that something I'm going to do in half to be able to decide or even put that on the next agenda item actually?
We're still looking at that.
Okay, that's fine.
And can we put it on the, can we put it on the agenda on the.
We probably should.
Yeah, I think we should. Well, the twentieth is very packed, maybe the seventh, May seventh, okay.
Or we could put it on the twenty-second on our special meeting.
That'd be fun.
Can, can we do that, Amy?
Yes.
Okay, because that's kind of, because that's part of the whole thing, you know, we've got the Boy Scouts on there, but, um.
What will be that item?
Um, the item is to discuss, um, discussion and decision about, um, our community meetings for the comp plan.
I think you guys also tabled the RSTU, so do y'all need to readdress that?
I don't think we're going to send that out.
I mean, I think, well, you sent out the original, the first one, so I don't know if you guys made a decision on that originally. You did, but one of the things you guys.
I don't know, um, Amy, we just put it on there and that way we can, because I, I think at this point, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to hire anybody to do that, that part of it.
Okay, it is, uh, ten o'clock, thank you, folks.
Thank you, Angela.
You're welcome.
Angela, good job.
Uh, next we have, um, Fayette County Farm Land Protection Board. I see, uh, the leader of the group's here, he must have took too ass for just going to call somebody in the morning.
I've got a sore arm, but that's okay.
Huh?
I've got a sore arm, but that's.
He's, okay. And Susie's on crutches, so we've got our hard work.
Okay, yeah, you could, you did a lot better than she did, huh?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, um, you, Adam, you want to go ahead and introduce your guest?
Yeah, I'll introduce my guest and, and I want to thank Commissioner Brennan for helping to get this on the schedule and to work with the local schedule to get her here. Here this morning is Levon Payton, she's the executive director of the State Farm Land Protection Authority. Um, and she is intimately involved in the legislation that created Farm Land Protection Boards in the state. And so, you know, I felt like we, and, and Commissioner Brennan felt like we needed to have some discussion and understanding about what farm land protection is and what it does and why it was created and all those things. So who better to tell us about that than the person who is intimately involved in it? So without further ado, Levon Payton. Thank you, Levon.
We do appreciate your coming down.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Good morning.
As Adam said, I'm Levon Payton, the director of the state authority. So the way West Virginia's set up, as you all can know, is the state has got a, um, a board, a political board. Counties around the state of West Virginia can opt in and create a farm land protection program that award. And we have now twenty-one of them, including Fayette County. Um, the counties don't report to the state, but we all, um, act together in front of the conservation easements. And the state code is pretty clear, um, on creating the boards, on how transfer taxes are used, purchasing properties, and a host of other things. The counties have the right within the state code to create a program and create like ranking criteria, which Fayette County has done. And, um, you know, different counties have different ranking points. But every county accepts applications on a competitive basis and then awards those to the landowners who rank up the highest. So I'm here today to, you know, help answer questions. I understand there's been, you know, some properties that did come before the commission that were approved that weren't moved on. I know you all have a property that you purchased down there. So I'm, I'm actually here to help and to answer questions.
You said something about the, the process, and what types of properties or, is that correct?
The ranking criteria.
Ranking, thank you, ranking. Does the County Commission come up with that or the Farm Land Protection Board?
So the way it works and the way it has worked in this county, um, is that the, a long ago, Farm Land Protection Board came up with a suggestion, a program. The County Commission approved that program. And so that program is legally inactive, inactive right now in the county. Um, and so the applicants that did send to the, to board and the board ranked, um, those were the highest properties that the board approved. Now, the code, they'll say the thing you can back to the commission to get approval, uh, is an absolute fail-safe in case there was something going on in the boards that the County Commission has set up, look. But it probably doesn't mean that you can just arbitrarily say you don't want to approve these properties because you do have a program out there. You can modify that, but right now, there's an active program.
Okay, so the County Commission could change that if they wanted to, they can make amendment to it.
They can make amendment, now typically, and I've seen this done, what would happen is you, as the County Commission, would ask the Farm Land Protection Board, we don't like this, or we don't like the ranking. And the state code does have, uh, different ranking factors, so it, it just is not free for all. The board would go back, deliberate that, come back to County Commission and say, here's what we come up with based on what you asked us.
Basically, just like the Planning Commission, what we just talked about a little bit ago, I'm just making sure. How does a, how should someone, I'm just asking questions because I ask these questions and sometimes maybe I don't get the right answer, I don't get a full answer, or I get a maybe or led a different way. How, what's the process of a property owner contacting, uh, to have a easement purchased on the property? Is there any specific process or does it matter?
Uh, well, I think, and I'm not, I'm not correct, but.
I mean, you're, you're the lady that.
Well, see, the boards have their own programs.
Okay, okay.
But what we've done is we've tried to make all the boards fairly consistent in the process. So there's a, there's a website that all the boards use, they have a written application. So a landowner can apply either to donate an easement, and there's some people who may be elderly, who may not want to wait to get on that ranking, and they want to get that easement done. Or a person can apply for sale. And so what happens is they say, here's my property, here's how many acres I have, here's the asking price that I bought for this property. The board has a deadline, they get all of those applications, and then they proceed to rank them based on the criteria that was set out.
Okay, well, and what, what you.
My, my answer is that we're on the county website, our contact information is on there, so anyone can contact us.
So I bagged it.
At any time, they contact us sometime through the county administrator's office, if they're interested, they might contact Ruth and, and that will be fed on to us, either, we would feed it on to Evan Blumstein. Evan Blumstein is our contractor who actually helps us rank the sites, that's his specialty. He does baselines, he does farm land protection, uh, work. And so we rely on him to take those properties in, to look at the soils. That's one of our main criteria is soils, because agricultural production is good. And we need to preserve the prime soils that we have, which is the point of the program. And so Evan, primarily, one of our ranking criteria is prime soils.
Okay, you said something else too that, that, uh, I guess I've, I've been waiting for that to be asked. I think, uh, Adam asked it, but I don't think we was ready for it yet. Now, you said if the County Commission has other ideas or interest in the property, then it can be postponed denied or, or not approved?
In a particular property? Not in a.
Or area?
Well, so for instance, you know, I suggest this to the counties, we have a couple out there that are saying, gee, we want this to be our corridor of development, like, based on comprehensive weather. And what I always tell counties is, you may not want to say, you know, you, as a landowner here in this area, you don't even get to apply for easements from County Board. But what we can do is you can change that ranking criteria to make those properties rank very much lower than the other properties. And so they would be at, uh, we keep going to say disadvantaged in the group. And that would be like the commission's desire, you can work that through the program. And it's a better way, um, and I, you all have zoning, yeah?
There is county-wise anchor, yes.
So in other words, if somebody had a piece of, a two-hundred acre farm in the middle of a commercial zone, it has to be, it can't be sold as a farm, it's, is it in the commercial zone, is it that spread? I, I just don't know.
I don't know, Angela just left, she would have been the one that could have answered that part probably.
So that, that could be a way to do it, if you truly have zoning, um, and this is the commercial quarter, you could say, if some, if somebody's in the agricultural zone, we're going to give them a significant amount more points. Because we want to encourage people in the ag zone to go under land protection. We don't want to encourage people in the commercial zone. You're not prohibiting them, you're just putting them in a disadvantage.
And quite frankly, that's one of the reasons I've always understood that farm land protection comes before the County Commission to show them the properties that they want to pursue and ask them if it's okay. Because if one of those properties is in a commercial development zone that the comp plan and you intend to develop, then you should be able to say, well, no, we've got plans for that property. That's the point of coming to you.
Does it go through the Planning Commission?
No, none of this goes before the Planning Commission, it's the, the, the County Commission is the backstop. Not the Planning Commission, but your Planning Commission is who gives you those rules and sets those zones. So to a degree, it is the Planning Commission, but that kind of comes before. And then it becomes a decision of the County Commission based on your understanding of what the Planning Commission has set up. Which is kind of what Levon's saying, is if you have a commercial zone, you could say, Farm Land Protection Board, we want you to rank properties, give properties less points if they're in this commercial zone because we're trying to use it for commercial use.
So what if the County Commission is in the process of changing?
I think it's all prospective, so I, I think, um.
US Route nineteen. If the, right now, it's, it's, uh, everything is rural residential here. Even on commercial, even with commercial properties, all rural residential is what, what it's been restricted to, just about. Well, I mean, I, I, maybe I'm going overboard, Jean, but all nineteen.
The Whitlock Farms.
I can bring that, Jean. Jean, you're out of order.
Thank you, John.
I'm talking about corridor nineteen, is what I'm talking about.
You're saying there's already planned highway.
It's, it's.
Our main road out here is nineteen, and what he's talking about is there are properties along that main artery and there's some zoning restrictions that we're revisiting on that area. And, and he's saying that it's his belief, and Jean disagrees, that, um, it, most of it is zoned rural residential. So it does kind of apply to the example that you gave us, I think, so.
Only thing, and we're in the process of trying to change all that, we're in the process of doing.
And I think there, there is a way that you can do that within the state code. I mean, and I could work with that in the board to take a look exactly how you could tailor that to make it very disadvantageous to perhaps, uh, put an easement along that corridor. Because what you're saying is you want to leave that open for commercial development. Now, um, if it really is a highway, uh.
It's, it's a main highway.
State highways can use an eminent domain procedure. So that was just another county that talked about that. So there are, already are tools, even if something were under easement and the highway is coming through, the state's got to apply an eminent domain and then use it for the easements. Instead of the public service to, to get through the easements. So it, it doesn't stop any infrastructure need.
So given that it does not stop infrastructure.
Imminent domain is, you know what that is, right? When the government takes over.
So it's counted the same way.
It's a legal proceeding that has to go, we would have to go through, but it sounds like there is a way around a permanent easement if, if it is impeding some major project like that that's in the government's interest.
And that, and that goes even if there's federal. Even if it would be federal money, because I do realize if the one is very close to closing, it gets a couple of matching. So even with the federal government on it, state money at times, uh, but that's. I think we've got one down there. But, um, so we've got local boards, we've got the state, and we've got the federal government, and we've got, and we've also got land. So we've got easements all over the state, now about thirty-five thousand acres, and they can be different partners on different easements. But the rules pretty much work the same with eminent domain. We did just have one up in one county where they were trying to put a bridge through and, um, highways finally decided they were just going to temporary close the bridge, that was easier to go for the easement. So they can't, you can't change their decision-making, but it doesn't prevent them.
How is the state board funded?
Uh, so the state board is funded through a reputation fee. And so in your courthouse, um, anytime somebody can send to report deeds, there's a, a very tiny little fee, part of it goes to the county clerk, part of it goes to the West Virginia Agricultural Land Protection Authority, and part goes to what they call the outdoor heritage conservation.
Okay, so the, so the counties that don't have farm land protection are funded in the same way? It just goes to the state board instead of the county board?
It's, it's not as much, like, at the state, my board gets about eight or a thousand dollars a year. The county boards, it depends upon the rate it's developed in those counties. So we have counties taking anywhere in from thirty-five thousand dollars in transfer tax at the county up to like a Berkeley county, at times, a public.
I'm sure it's outrageous, yeah.
Yeah, this is about a hundred and seventy-five a year, I believe.
It's been going, it's been increasing.
Yeah.
Year by year, because we've had more development.
And, and that's, that's how the program was designed, so if you've got a county that's rapidly building out, it gives an opportunity, which is a good planning opportunity, to protect some of the farm land in that county that we're completely developing.
So the advantages to having a, it, just because I, I think I already know the answer, but the advantages to having a county, a county board are basically so you could have more, um, targeted, you know, programs? And, I mean, help me understand the advantages of the county board versus state board?
Yes, and, uh, at the state, it's me.
Right, right.
So, um, like, I try to service this, I'm a protection board, I do just visit a landowner. And Paddle Capital yesterday, who wants to get our property protected. But it's better to have a local board, and you all have control, you all know your, your environment than anyone else. And, uh, it, it just works better, it raises your own local money. The citizens, the boards, everyone answers, you know, they can come in, the citizens can teach you to say, please, please change this or please do this, and you help.
I got one more question, don't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
One more question, the people want farm, they want easements on their property to maintain, to keep it as a farm, is that correct?
That's correct.
Usually when they do that, uh, is it about money or is it just about they want to make sure their farm is, has an easement on it? So in the world, it can always be a farm.
I think there's, I think there's a great, and so, uh, I've got another landowner. She originally wants to donate, I think, easement because she never wants to see it. Some landowners absolutely need that money to pay off their mortgage, or get easement. Because an easement's either got to have the mortgage paid off or it's got to be subordinated. In other words, the bank has got to say, no matter, even if we close or we, we've got to honor this easement. And so there are, there are people and farmers who use that money to pay off their loans, sometimes to farm credit, for their farm loans that pay off. Uh, and then, you know, there are people, people, um, generally wanted to opt out or they can hold out for development. And so there's always a desire there to see the land protected. It's just, how, how much do they want the cash payout?
No. I got, I'll answer that, it's another thing, but. But can a easement be removed?
No.
So once the easement's there, no one can ever purchase that property to develop it or anything? They can't buy the easement out and the money go back to farmland protection?
That's correct.
Okay.
But eminent domain could be used, right? If, if there was a compelling government need, right away?
But that's just right away stuff. That's not utilizing property for commercial development.
And I will say to add to Levon's point, we've had farmers who have actually used the proceeds from the easement to buy equipment to continue farming. So, you know, it's not just, you know, in a lot of cases, they're older farmers and they want to see their land protected and they want to also be able to leave some to their children financially because they're not really leaving the value of the land to them if they put an easement on. Because it can only be agriculture. And if they're not interested in that, then, you know, they want to leave something to them. But we also have instances where there are farmers who need to buy equipment and continue production.
Okay. But if you just purchased, if you was just, if the farmland protection board wanted to just put an easement on a piece of property for a property owner, they could do that without paying them anything if that's what the, the property owner wanted?
If the property owner fills out the donation form and applies to the board.
And again, you have to approve that. Even if it's a donation, you have to approve that. We can't put an easement on a property that needs to be developed.
Okay, has there ever been one that's been donated in Fayette County?
We've had part pieces donated, yes. Uh, the Hunt Farm, Mr. Hunt, Mr. and Mrs. Hunt, they donated portions of their-
Portions of it, but part of their part was paid, right?
Yes, part was paid.
Okay, okay. I've, I've read them all.
The numbers in front of me, most, a great majority of the easements, not so much since the 2008 real estate collapse, but the majority of the easements historically in the state have done what they call bargain sales. In other words, the landowner comes in, they know their property's worth a half million for the easement this is. They'll say, I'll take 200,000 for it. And so they can get, if they want, a federal tax deduction for the other 300,000. Some people don't even take the tax deduction. But landowners can't come in, even in well-funded counties, they, if they've got huge properties, they can't come in and ask even what the market value of the easement would be because the board probably doesn't have that much money. So you're going to see most of them with what they call bargain sales. So they are donating, they're being paid a piece and they're donating a piece.
I guess I'm, you know, it's not so much against the farm. But at what my, you know, I got my little cans of food over here that everybody made me move to the corner.
That was me.
You know, I was brought up-
Trying to get him to take him home.
Yeah, I was brought up, I was brought up farming camp. I mean, that's what we did in the summers when I was a kid. Well, I guess what my big issue is, and this tax is being paid, everybody pays a tax to purchasing houses, right?
The transfer.
The transfer.
Who are transferring property.
Yeah, 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 purchasing houses, purchasing commercial property and everything. And if a farmer needs the money and he's going to continue farming and producing for the county, I don't have a problem with it. But you get a quarter of a million dollars, and I know I use that figure, and I probably, you only probably got one you paid quarter of a million dollars for, why, remember 230,000? Something like that, what I remember. I just, and what, you know, if they had a mortgage, I can understand it. If you don't have a mortgage, I mean, I just, and you're not going to farm on it, that's my only problem. The public is paying for that, that, that free property they get. And I guess that is my, my big problem with it. As far as it needing to, uh, use to produce something, hey, I'm all for it. I'm for producing farms, is what I'm for.
I, I'll make two points, because we thought about this a lot when we were writing the code back in 1999. One is we want to preserve the best soils. And West Virginia being very mountainous, when I, when I started this, I called up some of the national organizations and I said, you need to help us out, we want to get this program going in West Virginia. And they said, oh, West Virginia doesn't have any farmland. And I said, okay, thank you, bye. But, so we, we have farmland, but we don't have a lot of farmland. So it's often important for us to be able to produce food locally in the future. And we're not talking about 10 years from now, maybe 100, maybe 200 years from now. And it'd be very nice to preserve those qualified soils, which is, what the focus is, so that we can produce some food. The second thing, and so if the farm isn't producing now, the idea is to preserve those soils for sometime in the future. It's, it's like a law, it's perpetual, it's a law. The second thing that we talked about when we wrote the law back in 1999, and I did actually look at some other countries, and we decided this probably wasn't applying in West Virginia. So the UK, they give you the right to farm, and they tell you what you're going to produce. You're going to produce, you know, 9,000 pounds of sugar beans. And if you don't produce those 9,000 pounds of sugar beans, guess what? They come back in and they take their farm. And so that's the only way that you could absolutely say, year to year, if you're not producing, it, it's always a free, you know?
And we had this discussion on the phone with you. You are the lady I talked to originally. We had the same conversation.
It's the same story.
It's the same conversation.
And so it's very hard to tell somebody, you must be producing every year. What if the landowner is in, you know, in ill health? You know, it's being passed the heirs or being sold to the next generation. The idea is to keep that land so that, yes, eventually somebody can farm.
And, and so I might interject here that we've actually in Fayette County, although it's a statewide organization, come up with a solution to that. And that is the West Virginia Agri Commons. Because we can't, just because we have an easement on a property, force someone to continue agricultural production. It just doesn't work that way. We don't have a legal right to that. But if we have a conservation organization whose purpose is to receive properties that have easements, agricultural only property, to purchase those and put those into a public trust and then lease those to people who have to produce, that puts those easements into production. And they'll continue to be in production because they're with a land authority whose purpose is agricultural production.
And that's what they do.
So that's what we intend to do with the Whitlock Farm, with the Agri Commons. But it's a statewide organization. So it can partner with Levon and the state authority to move around the state and start to put some of these places into agricultural production by buying. That's the intention. But it started in Fayette County, which we should be proud of. It's a solution to a problem that the state authority identified before they were a state authority.
Well, I hope you're right, 100 years from now, people are farming, but we're too lazy. It's like, even me, because I tell you what, when I was a kid doing that, the only good thing I got about it was I would fish every evening in Canard. That's where it took me. But I got one more question for you. And, uh, now, and I was going to ask this a while back, but I didn't ask before in the meeting. But now that she's here, she can answer the question definitely. I think she already has. Can the commission, if, when he brings a proposed easement to the commission, can the commission go ahead and request easements on the property prior to, in, uh, in other words, just say, right away, yes ma'am, right away, right away? Utility right away, a road right away? If we feel, if the commission feels this is going to be maybe a main, main road for sewer, main park for sewer?
I'm not a lawyer, so I just, the county asked me that because they want to put, the county's got the idea of putting a telecommunications line. And the plan was that it would go through a property that is about to go under easement. And what I advised them was to go out and seek a way to put a right of way, a pre-existing right of way through that property for that. Because if the right of way is pre-existing, then it's allowable. And sometimes that can be a better way than-
Than the eminent domain process.
And we allow right of ways for adjacent properties. Like we were in a situation out with, um, that's our senior's property, where somehow some surveys had gotten off and the neighbor's driveway was on the easement. So we allowed for that in our easement, that, that, that neighbor could still have a right of way through our easement to get to their property. So those do happen in the easements we create.
Well, I'm just, it, prior to, just like what you brought and you asked the commission, I didn't mention it then, but I, I, one of my things is, was going ahead and putting, at requested a prior easement through the property, utility easement.
Are you talking about in general terms or for specific?
Well, let's say, well, one of them's on Route 19. One of the properties is on Route 19. And anything you do on Route 19, utilities, sewer, or anything, they don't want to go around properties.
Right.
They want to head straight down 19.
Right.
With you, utility sewer or anything else. And that's, that's what I'm bringing up.
In general, if we identify those on the survey at the right way, so we know where it's going to go, and the owner will know where they can do things. It's not necessarily a blanket statement where we say, oh, you have a unlimited right of way to go anywhere you want to.
Right, right.
Generally, we'll, we'll set that out in the easement. And again, like Levon said, if there is a true public need, there is the potential to use eminent domain to do that.
It's just a big pain in the-
Oh, I know. You don't want to do it. It's not publicly positive.
No, and you just don't want to do it. You want to try to take care of the problem before that, before you get, before you get there, that's what I'm saying. And the properties that you presented to us, you haven't even done any work on, they were just requested, correct?
So our policy on our farmland protection board, which may be different from other counties, I have a group of board members who are incredibly conservative about public money. And they don't want to waste. And so what we have done from the beginning is we come to the commission first. We don't spend a dime. We don't spend any money on Evan, we don't spend any money on surveys, easements, anything. And so we've come to the county commission and found out whether it's worth pursuing. Because we don't want to spend a bunch of money on it, and they come to you and you all say, nope. And then we've just wasted a bunch of public money.
So you just told me exactly what I wanted to know. It's prior to anything. Okay.
Yeah, we, we come to you prior.
Something could be wrote up or put, requested from the property owner for an easement through the property.
Yep.
Okay.
And that can be, and that can be part of our process. This process and evidence can tend to that, can take a year, two years to finalize. And until that easement document is signed by both parties with a lawyer, it's not legal. And so anything can then be put into that easement covenants and different things can be put into that easement if they're necessary, within that whole period.
Okay.
That's, that's, you know, back and forth with the property owner. If, if that's necessary and they agree to it and the other parties agree to it, then they can easily get on the easement.
Okay.
I actually advise counties, because the due diligence, as we call it, is time consuming and it's, you know, really expensive, especially if you're doing a survey. And we haven't even talked about the appraisal. All those properties have to be appraised, and that's-
And yellow book appraisals, which is even worse.
Yeah, we only have handful, yeah, we started out in the state doing yellow book appraisals, which are the federally sanctioned Department of Justice, very complicated appraisals. Because we, we wanted to make them consistent around the whole state and we wanted to make it fair to landowners. And we didn't. We got a county that would just have super, but were very consistent around the state. But all of that is an expensive process relatively. And I advise the board to come to the commission and say, okay, here are three, you know, here are three, here are four top-ranked properties, you know, do we have the permission to report the due diligence? And so you know, you know, way at the beginning, what properties they're looking at.
Well, and I, and that's the first thing I've seen. I didn't want to say too much, but one of them's right over Route 19. And to me, if there was going to be any utilities run, any sewer run, I don't even know what's there. The first thing that comes to my mind in development is, I think something needs to be taken care of prior to.
Well, and so you know, if I bring you three properties, and actually I won't bring you anything after the 20th because I'm off the board, so I won't be bringing you anything that somebody else will. But if we bring you three properties, it doesn't mean you have to approve or deny all three. You can approve two and deny one, or deny two and approve one. You can look at them individually and say, okay, that's a good one, that's a good one. I'm not so sure about this one, let's table this one, we need to look at it. That's okay. You don't have to just say, well, no, we can't do anything. Because I, I truly feel like Jarrett and Rogers are probably not going to be an issue with the Route 19. As far off of now 19 as they are, close to the Meadow River. So if you want to hold off on Sparks because you feel like there may be some issues with development there on 19, you can still go ahead and let us start working on Jarrett and Rogers. We've got money we need to spend and we want to spend. And if their, I mean, applications are good and you feel like that's an okay place to conserve farmland, they need to be.
And so, and I told you this at the summit, but as far as I was concerned, I just didn't know enough about it. And I'm not going to make a permanent decision until I'm educated. We've been here three months, we've been doing budget for two of them. So as far, you know, this is part of my education. So it, you know, it's, it's not about whether any of those are a good idea. It's because I didn't know enough to make a, you know, binding decision on something like that.
It's a complicated process and there's a lot that's to it. But if you go against the legal side, title burden, that I've had, some of the county protection board folks, you know, many of our volunteers on, on the boards, the volunteers, say, Jean Levon, if we knew it was going to be this complicated, you'll learn, you'll learn.
I feel their pain.
We have a lot of property owners who say that, too.
And the other thing I'll say, which I may not like, maybe high on the program, it's not like the top program, but it started out that way in Merkwood County, where I'm from. And the developers certainly didn't, were just really against it. And now, we're fast over, you know, 20 years, the developers are very much for it. Very much for it because they're putting such ambitions up against these properties. There are times when they get, and a couple have done this, they bought like huge squats of land and when the collapse occurred and they couldn't help it, they could do it in farmland protection. They decided that wasn't good for them. And so there's absolutely no place to use it now, maybe from the wheelers. The wheelers still, it's rather, not the developers.
Now, me and you also had one discussion, I know you're the lady I talked to originally. Now that you told me about the UK, you, I talked to you-
I didn't convince you, huh?
Well, I tell you what-
That's why we brought you back.
Yeah, they, they, and we talked about this, and it's in code, but there's another little quote at the bottom of the code. We talked about producing farms. And if, if the commission or the farmland protection board wanted to, if a farm was going to be produced, produced, producing farm, that there would be equipment or something else like that. That, it says in the code that it can be used to purchase equipment or something like that. And then I was informed that that doesn't, that doesn't apply, or you cannot do that. Could you go?
Force, force someone to purchase a-
He's saying use our farmland protection and preservation funds to buy equipment.
No, no.
To preserve, to, to, uh, produce something on a farm?
No, it's solely, it's solely for land and the cost of the, to easing or purchasing.
I seen it in the code, but there was another little quote down at the bottom, but I think Ruth reminded me that it means no, you can't use that.
No, so, um, the idea, and even on the purposes of the farms, the idea was never that the counties or the state would get into farm production home floor. And it's already happened in one of the purchases down in Berkeley County, and it was a thousand persons down here. In fact, I think he spoke to Colin before the farm was purchased down here. And I said, well, if you've learned anything from Berkeley County, absolutely go through the commission and get approval before you do it, which I, and they did.
Even for, even for the bid price? The commission was aware, we went into executive session, and the commission approved our bid price.
So, um, but the idea was never to hold those, it was like to be a stopgap measure. And the code says, you know, before, before you sell that farm and the, and the implied intent is there, you will resell that farm someday, you must put conservation easement on it. And so the idea is still is the easement process, not finding a seller code.
And, and again, I think that hopefully we've relieved a lot of heartburn off, over this issue of non-producing easements through the Agri Commons. And while I might be not here anymore for farmland protection, I'm one of the co-founders of the Agri Commons, so I'll still be back. Because to me, that is what actually makes this process even more valuable to the county and to the public. Because I still stand, a producing farm is good economic development because it goes beyond economic development. That, that farm and that family are spending money in the community, their products are going out and bringing new money into the community. It's providing food, one of the basic needs of life, and it's local. So if something happens to the food system, you have local produced food. I mean, it, it hits on so many levels, you know? Preserving that way of life, that agrarian way of life, that a lot of our folks in Fayette County, they appreciate that way of life and they want to maintain it. And so just to kind of put another plug in, I think in Fayette County at least, we started to create a system that maybe works even better than the system worked before.
You may be interested too, um, so the Department of Agriculture, this is the West Virginia Department of Agri, went around the state and got feedback from citizens. So the Department of Agriculture, this is West Virginia Department of Agriculture, went around the state and got feedback from citizens. I don't know, maybe a year and a half, two years, seven, eight years in the state, over my mind per year. But one of the things that some landowners are telling them is, oh, we've got a lot of out of state landowners who own land in West Virginia. And oh, by the way, their farms are not being farmed. And so one of the things that I, someone from food cartilage has asked with working on it, is we're going to get a data set of all out of state landowners who own like 48 acres or more. And we have to be careful that this farm land, not some mountain land. And we're going to try to avail them to them. We're going to look and see if they're under abuse, if they are producing. And if they're not, try to inform them that hey, even if you're not here and producing on this farm, you can lease this to farmers. Because right now we've got farmers around the state who are looking for more lease. And so it doesn't have to be the person living on that land. It could be someone leasing. Down in the party ranch, come quarter, there are quite a few farmers that lease thousands of acres. And so it doesn't have to be the owner. So maybe we can report back to you eventually on how that's coming up. Because that's an idea in someone's mind, but we have no approval yet.
Any more last questions? No, I'm good. Okay, I think this lady answered all of them.
I have no more questions.
Okay, currently we have some time to ask questions about farmland protection in Fayette County. The questions can only be geared toward farmland protection in Fayette County. Again, you'll have three minutes to talk. If your questions veer out of the farmland protection, you'll be muted. So we'll open it up to questions. Raise your hand. Amy, do we have anybody?
Kathy has her hands up. I've asked her. She's still had a question. It's been up for a while. I can unmute her.
Okay, and again, this can only be about farmland protection.
I was just wondering what specific properties the commission is referring to on Route 19 that would be considered farmland.
One of the properties that we propose to place feet upon is owned by Brian Sparks. And it actually, I think it may actually have but the DOA right on 19. It's a, it's a, it's an old family farm that Brian bought recently and is interested in putting an easement on and protecting it.
Any more questions on that particular land? Kathy?
Bush Arrowhead Creek Road up that way. It's on the right. If you head towards Thunderville, it's on the right. All three properties that we have are all real right.
Okay, Amy, any other hands up?
Not yet.
Okay. Any questions from in the house?
I have a question. Which property, Tom, were you referred to? Where are you concerned about getting?
Sparks property.
Oh, the Sparks.
Same one.
Same one, yeah.
Which does a but. I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Yep, it does.
Do you remember it butts the right of way?
I think it does.
Okay. I know the access point doesn't, but the land itself spreads from the road over to the DOA right of way.
There's actually two, two parcels too, I believe. There's actually two.
Well, yeah, it sort of is because it's kind of split by the road. The house is in, on one section on the other side of the road from 19. And then there's a big field that goes up towards 19.
And there's public water, not across 19.
Okay, well, I didn't know. I mean, I don't know if there's sewer up there.
You know Brewer's Cap.
I don't know if there's sewer up or not, but I was just saying, in case there was any, maybe broadband, maybe.
All Brewer's Cap, that's public water.
Yes.
All sewer is on site. There's no broadband.
Right.
Amy, any other questions about farmland protection? No hands up?
Before we end, would, would you allow me to resubmit those three properties to you during a commission session so that you can look at them again?
I, I don't mind if Alison, I mean.
I'd like you to schedule it in June so I have time to go look at them. And we have these, we have all these zoning and things coming up. And I really feel like all these things need to be married, you know, if we take a look at certain processes about how to do things. And I might just meet with you and Angela and others to try to figure out a, a good way to streamline things. So we, so we have, when, when somebody comes to us, that we have somebody in the know who can say, okay, here are the zoning implications, or here are the implications for our planning. Because that's, you know, that's really where we're coming from as far as this goes is, you know, is it going to impede our economic development in the county? Or is there a potential? And, and, and I think Commissioner Lewis has made a good point, you know, can we head off any future problems by negotiating your right of way in advance or whatever like that? And I do, you know, as somebody who doesn't practice property law, but who studied for the bar, I do think, you know, you can negotiate just about anything in a land deal when you make it. But I don't think we can renegotiate it.
And, and just to reiterate, I'm, I'm leaving the farmland protection board, so I won't have that authority, but I am still.
You have the knowledge.
The other thing is, I'm still at the end of the day, an extension agent for West Virginia State University. That is my job. And that's ag based and I do community economic development. So agricultural economic development is what I do. And if I can do anything to help, informationally, resource wise, whatever it is, I'm there for that. So I would suggest contacting Evan or whoever becomes chair of farmland protection board, but I'm happy to come out and work with you.
Okay.
Okay, Levon, thank you for coming down. We appreciate it. It, it's nice having visitor state in our neck of the woods. I hope that someone takes you out to the farm and lets you see what it looks like. Susie will hobble you out there, but.
Yeah, if you have Susie, do that would be awesome.
Yeah, that would be cool. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. Okay, Ruth, we're going to take a break. And we're going to be back in five minutes so that we can get the rest of your stuff out of the way. Break time.
And we're still waiting on.
I wasn't, he was in and out so fast. I have a copy to give him, but. They're going to ask us for a thousand more money in the grant.
Okay.
I was going to ask if I could have one for my child.
You can have mine because I'm just going to take a picture of it.
Okay.
I'm going to put her in my phone, so I'll give you my card.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they have them, but I don't have one. I just put it in there because I'm picky about how I want it in there. There, you'll find it under scanner apps. There's scanner apps for it. But by the time I would scan everything, I'll have all of it in there anyway. Levon. Hey, Levon. I have a bunch of family up in Berkeley County in the Martinsburg area. You might even know some of them. My uncle Charlie Duffy was the head of RISA eight, the education stuff. Amber Beckman, elementary school principal at Berkeley Springs for a long time. Sandy Duffy from Rosemont Elementary. That's, yeah. Yeah, Michael Kenbeal was the truancy officer for a long time. He just retired from the education system. It has. I transitioned through there on my way. I lived in the DC area and I lived there just right off Tennessee Avenue. You're my cousin. Well, probably less than a year, but. Thanks so much for coming in. Let's understand.
Thank you. And my father told me, tell you hello. He remembered you.
Really?
Yeah, he was the founding director down here when they first started it. Yeah, so it, yeah, he told me, he said, now, he said, boy, you tell her. I said, hello, yes, sir. Thank you very much. Susie get better.
Oh, well.
You know, it's planting season. Don't be like me. Don't be like John. I'm the bad example this time of year.
Okay, and I was messaging people while I was doing this. So let's see. I don't know what they, I don't exactly know what they said.
He said five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, everything's free.
I, I'm sitting here thinking, I said, now, whose game trying to be? I said, oh, Steven Seagal, when I saw the ponytail in the back.
Hey, Tom. We were talking about all of this stuff. And she, he sent a thing. I've got, thank you. I've got copies for you now. I can email it to you.
Can you, I just take a paper. It's just probably one page.
It is. I've got a million people in the meeting now for your.
I asked Jared for me to come over and speak at the beginning of the 11 o'clock item because about that bang the payroll app. Because that'll help us solicit public comment for all this planning that we're doing and priorities. But he's, he just got them. He's just going to tell us about it.
I said, that's not him right now.
Yeah, that's him. But I have one for them the other day and, and I feel like, like, so the mayor's come here, you know, what the tools are that we have. His, he just had some good ideas about how just that software and that website could help us.
I'm reading any comments and manage this process and get better and get more input than we could just. It's just a way. On, on the cop plan.
All areas of the county? You're the ones that don't have internet?
Well, that's, I was telling, well, see, I was telling him that. I was like, one of our issues, you know, first of all, is that we need to see how it would work from a cell phone. Because most people, you know, are accessing internet through their cell phone or iPad now and they might through their kids' tablets or whatever. But it was, in addition, they endorsed paintings. It's just a way to get more input into things.
Mayor must have rode his bike though. It looks like he did that.
I got it. I got a print. What else, what else is going to happen?
I agree. And also, that's, it sounds like I get the software, we get more public input. Right, exactly. So then we can, so then we can.
Try to log in.
We can make it as, as available to people who. For the people who can't show up to meetings, the people, you know. And they have moderators reporting what he said, so they can't, so people can go on there and just complain.
Great, you ride your bike up?
Yeah.
I figured you did. It's a pretty day to do that. Okay, Ruth, we'll get back to your stuff.
Okay, we have number seven, which is the way through benefits for you. Do you want to discuss that now or wait?
Let's wait because I, I forgot to talk to sheriff about it and I texted him and chief deputy to get input on there, on the civil service person. I suggested Nick Hall because he's the chief of the deputies association, but whoever they decide to recommend is. We have to appoint one county employee and we have to appoint a civil service employee. And I didn't want to do the civil service without the sheriffs submitting somebody.
Do you, uh, do you want to postpone up for now?
No, let's go skip it and then at the end of the meeting, if I hear back from him. I'll, I'll move to postpone it if we don't get to it.
Okay. Go ahead to number eight.
All right, the next one is a request from the paternal order of police to use the courthouse front and sideline on May 14th for the memorial. Anthony, we have their request.
We've done that every year and it's for a worthy cause. Not only that, but I'll tell you, this weekend I made several trips through. And it wasn't, there was only one trip out of 10 that someone wasn't taking their picture with the statue or over at the memorial. So it was, it was really good. A motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion to approve. And second, for the paternal order of police to use the courthouse front, sidelines on May the 14th, 2021, for the annual law enforcement memorial.
Let me just ask this question. You know if, Amy and Ruth might know this. They like to use the memorial building as a rain backup. Is that something we need to discuss as well?
Well, they've never run into that. They might do it rain or shine.
They've canceled it before and they moved it there once that I'm, I'm aware of. I just think we need to.
Offer that as.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? So paternal order of police gets to do their normal thing on May the 14th. And if you haven't been here before on May 14th, you need to show up and, and, and support these folks. They do a really good job, especially the police officers.
It's usually at noon.
Okay, number nine.
So this is the request to get reimbursed for the Supreme Court for the right for the family law judge, $3,375.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve our reimbursement for the family law judge. Any discussion? All those in favor? We get to ask for money back. All right. Is there a second page or? No, there is not.
Which we could also discuss at the end.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that later.
All right, let's start checking to see about our participants. Amy, can you unmute Jenna, please? From N R G R D S.
DA.
Whatever.
Yeah.
I get all those numbers are mixed up too. She's answering.
I asked her to unmute after I told her.
Jenna, are you there?
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you now. Okay, we're just.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Everybody's on there that's supposed to be there.
Okay.
Ingram is here with us. Any other? Any other municipal?
Yes, I've got Meta Bridge.
Okay, Meta Bridge, you want to, you want to have them?
Okay, and then here's somebody that just says recorder.
That's what?
Just says recorder. It might be. Just says recorder, it might be, um, Gully Bridge, because I think they were gonna send their recorder.
Okay, what's their name?
It just says recorder.
Oh, it just says recorder, okay.
Trying to see who else might be a municipality.
Anybody from Fayetteville? Well, no, Gabe's here. Anybody from Oak Hill?
I do not see.
Well, Oak Hill's experiencing some technical difficulties in their city hall now.
I'm gonna ask them, listen to the message.
Okay. We've unmuted whoever says recorder on their name. Please mute your mic yourself, along with Jenna, you can leave yours open, but you're gonna be talking to us here. And Gully Bridge, if you would, I mean, uh, who else was on there?
Meta Bridge.
Meta Bridge, if you would mute your own mic, and then that way you can control it, to turn it on and off.
I do.
Tom, you want to, or? You wanna?
Sure.
This one?
No, I, so the reason we put this on the agenda is because, as I've mentioned multiple times, it seemed to me as a county that we hadn't set strategic priorities for how we're gonna proceed with economic development and things like that. Not, not in a way where we're comparing what we spend and, and, and that against it. So it's fortuitous that this year is the year of the comp plan update, because this is a great opportunity for us to get input from all of the communities about what their priorities are, and to make sure that as we spend, that we're sending tax dollars to each of the municipalities, the local communities, to help them develop their areas down there. Because everybody's paying them, and not everybody's benefiting from them, in my opinion. So, um, what we were trying to do is involve our colleagues, we invited the mayors, and thank you to those of you who took the time to tune in. And we'll still reach out to them, because I, I feel like they're integral parts. We just spoke earlier about, um, starting our comp plan process early and starting to have these regional or municipality meetings where, at a time where the, um, community members can come and attend and explain to us what their priorities are, what kind of businesses that their areas might want to benefit from, um, we've talked about whether we can offer economic incentives to small businesses for startup costs, loans, or whatever we can do to try to get, um, development in here, and maybe tax incentives for the bigger businesses that want to come in, or maybe incentivize them to stake a small business to come in, you know, that sort of thing. So, um, those are the types of things that we, we need to, as commissioners, need to understand from the community members themselves, because priorities in Montgomery are gonna be very different than the priorities in Danny, Danny's and Meta Bridge, um, same thing for Mount Hope. Everybody has different needs within their community. I know a lot of, um, deputies that I know who live across the river would love to have some restaurants to deliver over there. So the plan is to try to figure out how we can prioritize making Fayette County a great place to live and, and to visit, and that we do it in an organized and structured manner. So whenever we, you know, have, as I see them sometimes randomly show up on the agenda for spending money, that, that we actually can look at our set of priorities and say, okay, we can even have the request priorities, how is this going to, um, comport with the priorities we've established for the county? Because just because we have money doesn't mean we should, should spend it, we need to direct it toward, um, the things that are gonna benefit the county as a whole as we come together with our, our newest version of the strategic plan, which is called the Comp Plan. I've invited Eric Gories here, um, he has an idea, and, and I like it, about how we can engage more community members. Now, of course, we understand that, um, this is gonna involve those who have access to internet, which is, is a small, um, there are a lot of people who don't here have access to internet, but, um, but those who do, you know, would be able to give comment, participate, and, and give us feedback from their communities. And it'll just be another tool we use, we're still gonna go out in person and visit with everybody, but it'll be another tool we can use to, to gather information from the citizens of the communities, um, to inform this process. So Eric.
Uh, as Eric's coming up, um, to the microphone, you know, these comp plans are gonna be very important to us. As it's been said a couple times before, we're a relatively young commission group. Still looking at things, uh, we're, we have a lot of questions, and we're gonna do more than just four meetings. We may end up doing multiple down the valley, because we catch a morning group, and we'll catch a night group. And the next time we'll reverse it, we'll get a morning group and another player in, and then do a night group. We'll do the same thing, uh, over in other areas of the county. So we're looking at a minimum of ten plus of these meetings, so that we can get a lot of input, and we have, we are gonna be asking, um, reaching for an N R G R D A and others to help us out. And we would like to have, um, input from our mayors, too, and people from their council, if possible, because I think it would help us out greatly on what's going on. So Eric, thank you.
Yes.
And welcome.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much for your time. Yeah, I want to quickly present on a national movement around community engagement and civic tech. Super relevant to where we're at, right? Not only the comp plan, but all the other huge opportunities that county has in front of it. Usually shoot, shoot from the hip, but I'm gonna read from my notes, so I, I give it, give you a good, um, overview of what we're talking about. Basically, this is a passion of mine, growing from my work with communities as a community coach with an organization called Community Development Hub. Works statewide, helps communities help themselves. I've seen again and again, the biggest win out of that community engagement work, or that community work, is intentional community engagement efforts. Builds positive energy, builds momentum for community building. So basically, what is community engagement? Seeks to engage a community to achieve sustainable outcomes, equitable decision-making processes, and deepen the relationship and trust between government organizations and communities, right? Drop on the veil between government and citizens. Governing bodies create and adopt this philosophy to be proactive, initiate communications and dialogue with the community to maximize that engagement. To invite citizens to, you know, use citizen as a verb, right? Something that they're actually participating in. To provide frequent and diverse opportunities for public education and engagement. How many of our citizens are fully aware of the comprehensive process? How often it takes, what, what's involved in it? To be collaborative, to be problem solvers together, to bring new ideas to the forefront. Your Zoom call is a good example of that, with keeping animal shelter, as you sought to figure out how we're gonna pay. So that's an example of good engagement. To encourage those ideas, to increase community awareness, interest and participation, to enhance community trust, to provide the transparency that we all desire from our government when they're making decisions on our behalf. And then what I want to really highlight is, the idea of engagement is to meet people where people are. And so that means, uh, online communication, engagement techniques to maximize participation, and traditional, uh, in-person, uh, methods and processes. So that's what I want to touch on mainly now, is going where the people are, and, uh, we call that right now, the, it's the realm that's growing called civic technology, which is basically, right, just the terminology for using technology in any way that you can. That encourages participation of citizens in community building and government. So you're familiar with a lot of these tools already, but comprehensively, you're looking at, how might you use video? How might you use emails? Moderated social media, not just social media, but moderated social media, so it's more productive. Polling, surveys, document sharing, mapping, and, uh, and more, to engage with and involve the community in decision-making, uh, and crafting our community. It does not replace the public meeting process or other print means of communication, but rather enhances the effectiveness of those, encourages participation in those, reports out what took place at those. So the planning purposes, uh, it doesn't also, uh, it doesn't replace the expertise needed to take all this information you're collecting and distill it down into something meaningful that's just meaningful, right? So that's civic tech in a nutshell, what it's attempting to do. Clearly, COVID has demonstrated to the world that, excuse me, that the use of technology is here to stay. Zoom meetings, even with fatigue, are not going away. So what, what does it require on, on our part, on your part? Philosophical commitment of leadership to the rewards of community engagement, not just using the technology, but a firm commitment to the belief that we should involve the community in every step of the way for making decisions. It is gonna involve a community engagement team committed to a sustained long-term effort. It's not gonna happen overnight, you're not gonna see, uh, the community participate, uh, from day one. It takes a sustained effort to invite your citizens. Creativity and some tech savviness for full use of engagement possibilities, which Fayette County has plenty of, though. Resources, in time, and funding, uh, a sustained effort, and we can talk a little more about that. One company that I keep speaking about, and they're kind of leaders in the forefront right now, international company, it's a great name called Bang the Table. So Bang the Table is a civic, uh, technology company, right? And, um, they're the perfect platform right now to conduct in one place all of your civic tech activities. What I would suggest, in my limited time, thank you for your time, is, uh, the next step would be a demo call with Bang the Table. I'm happy to set that up through a contact of mine. And I would just suggest you identify some of the people who might be involved in implementing this. I know we spent time talking with Gabe about it and others, there seems to be support for the idea. So who are the four or five people you might put on a demo call to have a productive introduction to what Bang the Table has in common? And I'll also point out, I just caught on their website, I don't know where the American Rescue Plan Act funding is, if that's, if it's foreign to me, but I saw there's a site that, uh, their platform, uh, can accept funds from that act. I'd be excited to help bring and orchestrate this kind of level of community engagement civic tech to the county. Right now, Bang the Table platform is being used in every state buckless. Any questions?
Well, I like something that you, that you said, we had lunch together after the last meeting, and, and, because I wanted to pick his brain on these things. And one of the things you said, it's, the purpose of this is to bring people into the process who aren't normally included. So, you know, I'll use my favorite example, Gene is always here, and, and he's able to come, and it's awesome. He's very active in the community, but there are other people who, who can't, you know, come during the day, or can't participate, in the way that they would otherwise like, and this would give them the opportunity to, um, participate in the civic process, and specifically with how it affects their individual communities, not just the county, but their own communities, to bring people in that we normally don't hear from, who don't have the ability to, to come to meetings, like, they get off work and they have their kids, or, you know. So that, that was one of the things that really appealed to me about this.
And I know, uh, Commissioner, you voiced the concern whether it would be accessible cell-wise. I did confirm that now, that, uh, the technology behind it allows it to be pretty seamless for cell.
Okay, because I, I did ask about cell phones and tablets, because our, you know, most people are working the internet off of cell phones and tablets these days. Some people have computer access, but I think that's more broadly available where there is broadband or Wi-Fi. So that's, that's good to know, that was a question I had, too.
I've got, I've got one question. Dylan, either with the comp plan or anything else in other areas of the county, could, could this, could it be formed to where, uh, say, we're putting something up about the comp plan, and it only, let's say, people from Anstead can talk about what they would like to see in their area, and only the people from a certain area would, uh, make suggestions in that area, instead of it being so jumbled?
So that's a good question, I, I can't speak, uh, a hundred percent to that, but I know there's a great deal of flexibility. Sometimes that may require a different login, and some of the Bang the Table sites you'll see are secured by login. You want to make it as inviteable as possible, but it does require, if you make the settings that way, right? It would require a login, or Anstead to get their feedback, but.
Or different bulletin boards, maybe, for town or country. Right, no, you're right.
Yeah.
No, I agree with that, because again, the priorities are gonna be different in each community, depending on.
Also, uh, there is a quick video, I, I've sent you a quick link, um, to forward on, and it does a, it's a four-minute video that gives a great overview of Bang the Table, and, uh, their recording is pretty sweet. And so just by registering, I bet it would be Anstead, and then the recording documents would just show you what Anstead had to say.
Yeah.
Or people registered with their address or zip code, it's already there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we can pull, we can pull out comments for only this area. I'm just trying to ask, just to make sure it's not all, any way we can just organize, yeah, jumbled mess.
I got, I'm pretty fired up for it, and I, I think this is the future of our democracy, obviously, challenges in the country, and this is an example of how we bring, bridge the gap on people, uh, bring it back to what's in front of them here, and probably solve it out community. Bang the Table has some great examples of what communities should do in that area. Not only are they doing comp plan, but they're saying they're putting up, like, hey, tell us where traffic issues are. Tell us, uh, hey, we're gonna redesign this part, hey, Wolf Creek bike trails, you know, where, where do you want the next trail? Uh, it goes on and on, and it's seamless, it does, like I said, it takes a commitment, and it, it requires like a business website that requires people utilizing it.
I like the idea, I'd like to look more into it, absolutely.
Yeah. So I'm gonna look up and watch that four-minute video to see.
I just forwarded it to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in and for.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Jenna? Are you still there?
I see her, but I can't hear her.
I need to unmute her again.
You, you did what to her?
I didn't unmute her, or, I, sorry, I couldn't unmute myself.
Okay.
They mute themselves.
Jenna, have you ever heard of, um, Bang the Table?
Um, I have.
Okay.
I have heard of Bang the Table, and there are a couple other, um, platforms that I have seen used, but am definitely not familiar with them. Um, I do think that this can be helpful in some of the work that we're doing. Part of our power project that, um, we are working on is, we do have a partnership with the West Virginia Community Development Hub that Eric works with, to engage with, um, communities in our four-county footprint, so that we can have those same conversations he was talking about. However, we are, like we discussed before, we've, you know, Allison put it really well when she opened up the conversation, that we have tried to pull these folks together multiple times and aren't getting, um, a really good response or turnout. So I do think we need to figure out how we can better convene multiple players to have them all at the table, so that we can have these communities deeply engaged in a lot of the work that we're trying to do, especially around how they fit into the outdoor economy in terms of business development, business recruitment, recreation, infrastructure, and those conversations. So, um, again, we're definitely in favor of supporting any sort of platform that can help that happen. And it sounds like Bang the Table might be an interesting approach to that, so that we can have a better turnout, because we are running into that. We had, before COVID happened, um, we had launched our outdoor N R G program and project, which was trying to basically just get some common themes around what communities could see in their footprint for the outdoor communities, what outdoor businesses needed support, and we had a really, really great turnout at those. We usually averaged fifty to seventy people, but they were usually all from one community. And so we can't approach business development and recruitment holistically if we don't have active representation from every community. So we are in favor of however we can help support that convening, and definitely utilize that, so that we can have additional players at the table, because a lot of this work is gonna require a unique approach and engagement from communities across the board.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Sharon from Fayetteville, these are all the, the leaders or mayors, William Hughes from PAX, and Dr. Anne Cavalier from Smithers, uh, for joining us on the call. So, uh, you, you've got a, a pretty good range of, uh, of leadership across the county. So you've got a pretty good range of leadership across the county. So Jenna, why don't you go ahead and start your things that you'd like to discuss with everyone?
Sure. So just a couple informal topics that we have tried, we have discussed before, but didn't have a lot of representation at the table. So I'm glad to know that that we have more communities present today and I really appreciate that. A couple of the opportunities that we see as a broad approach to economic development that are coming down the pike. I've talked with the commissioners about this, but we're going to see a really large infrastructure package that comes down really soon and we're going to be expected to have some shovel-ready projects. And I know some of those projects from the county commission's priority level that we've talked about, Tom and John and Allison have all mentioned different infrastructure-related projects. But what I would really like to identify at the community level is are there active projects in terms of infrastructure development, definitely water sewer broadband, that we can combine with other projects in our counties to make a request for large funding for the development of that? And obviously, we would work directly with Region Four to help implement that project and manage all of the engineering and pre-engineering work. But I really think that that's one of the things that I wanted to put on the table as the most pressing right now is that if we can sort of list out those priority development areas collectively as a county, that would help us in trying to rally some of this funding. Is that helpful? And are there questions around what that looks like?
Do you have examples of some of the ones that people have submitted already?
I know that we had talked about the, I think the sewer infrastructure that's needed at the Cloverleaf that we would want to prioritize, as well as there was some interest in a potential site in Okeel at one time, but we haven't heard from that group in a while. It was it was some private ownership, but there wasn't mainline access to them. So we actually, that's sort of the issue that I'm facing right now is that we have some money available to do some site assessments for properties and I don't have a list of sites that we should be interested in assessing. So I need the communities to to help identify those.
I know Gatewood Road is another area where we have some, we have the golf course out there and we have the bike farm and other businesses set up that don't have sewer either. But what do you guys, so I guess what we're looking for is, and you have a deadline, right, Jenna?
Well, so what we would like to do is if we could, over the next really two weeks to, I mean, I could stretch it three weeks, but if if we can potentially identify locations that have sites or the potential for sites that can recruit businesses that are larger than 10 acres but need infrastructure development, that would be phenomenal if folks could basically just send a parcel map or a tax map or any sort of boundary that just identifies a location that needs potential infrastructure development. That, we could work from that.
Well, I would like to see, I would like to see some of the towns and municipalities give any ideas. I mean, have they, anybody contacted Jenna on any, any of what she's talking about right now?
Is that question the mayor?
Yes, yes.
No, I, well, Jen and I have talked about another issue, but not this specific one. And I don't really understand what she's saying as far as what infrastructure we're talking about. Are we talking about fiber or are we talking about sewer plants or infrastructure or all of it?
We want to prioritize water sewer and fiber.
Okay, I can tell you this. Montgomery is getting ready to advertise for a director of information technology. We believe that she gives Montgomery and put in our own fiber throughout town, provide the residents with free Wi-Fi. We can provide them television service 24 hours a day for $30 a month. And we'll pay the infrastructure, we'll pay the person that, and this has come out soon. If anybody knows the IP people, that's top caliber because we've already talked to people in Fayetteville to install it. We have talked to ditch weds who have some mini trenchers. We've had Montgomery those places a couple of times. It's certainly out of my field as a mayor. So I've reached out with the finance committee and so far they've approved, taken counsel to hire a director of information technology to oversee all of the infrastructure. Hopefully, my plan would be to have that person. So that's a project that we're working on when it comes to information technology. And I'm sharing it here with you for the first time. The only other folks that, both of my finance committees have approved this decision financially, but the council has approved this decision, I think so. We're going to be on the fast track because there's some other things happening, as you know, that have been deployed here. It's coming in. We'd like to see the city of Montgomery's fiber network go up North Street to have 5G network capability for cell phones on top of that. So we're working on that and I don't know if that's one of the projects that you want to focus on, but that model's rolling. We have some other things that I'm in negotiations with on taking that fiber across the Montgomery Bridge. They're getting ready to do a $13 million upgrade. And I want, I'm meeting with the Department of Highway to take conduit, seven-layer conduit across Montgomery Bridge that'll get connectivity to Smithers and the other side of the river down to Marina, the Palm Temple one down. Because here's the thing with fiber that I've learned. You know, across the river either, across the bridge, if you go under the water, it's real expensive. So if we have the, if we have the conduit on the bridge, that's rentable. Space is rentable. It's seven layers. We'll put out, we'll probably put 98 pair in one layer of the conduit and that'd be more than enough to do Smithers, Boomer, any one of that.
Amen.
We're working on that. And so that's, I don't want, I'll take all this down, but that's one thing. And I had a couple other questions here with these plans that we're going to. And I'm assuming what I picked up here is that the commission is going to visit the different communities. And we're going to gather all this information, but my question would be, once we do this, who's going to evaluate all this information and put it in a useful form? I think, I think somebody brought it up here. Because the worst thing you can do is do all these studies, and Mayor Cavalier and I know this firsthand, and put the book on the shelf, because then your community loses faith in what we're doing. You've got to show some movement. So I've said enough, but yes, infrastructure as far as fiber, we're on that and we're getting ready to hire, I think we are, council allows me to do it, a director of IT with City of Montgomery. That's something we've never had there. We have come so far in information technology in the last four years. We have fiber all over Montgomery, but who can afford it? This is the problem. It's there. It's probably here in Fayetteville, but you can't afford it. So my position is I'm going to put in my own infrastructure and I'll pay for the initial hookup and the bandwidth, the most people buy, I'll pay for that. And then I'll divvy that out to the communities, the businesses and stuff like that out of my own network. That's my plan. But it's a big plan and, but we're moving on. So I would love to share that information with you, what we've done as far as we have. Another thing is GIS mapping. I know that's been a big issue. And I want to work with the county or whoever. But with this, with this kind of fiber and technology in Montgomery, there's no doubt in my mind, I'm going to go GIS. With everything, whether it's something at the county level or whether it's something that we just build in Montgomery. Because technology is tomorrow. And I think you guys are spot on what you're doing by getting out in front of this thing. I'm out in front of it. I know Mayor Cavalier is and we're trying to do all we can do in the valley to get to do that. So I've said enough. Anybody has any questions on what we're doing? I do have people work, I work with other people. Like I said, this is a very special way to put this in. I've had the people in, out of Virginia that latest stuff. They put the conduit in and they boil it through or something. It's above me. That's why I need a manager and a director. So if I can answer any questions, I'll be happy.
Well, I wanted to comment, Jenna, you know Montgomery is is one of the, is the next biggest city down the valley and Smithers with it. But there are people between here and there that don't have access to this stuff and including our law enforcement in in critical situations up some of the haulers down there. So I'm wondering if there's a way we could work with your organization to build upon what Mayor Ingram is doing to try to expand some service and infrastructure to, for for law enforcement and 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 the communities in those areas that lie in between these municipalities. And also up the, up the mountain too. I mean, I think that's a, I've read about other communities doing what you're doing, which which I've considered because I think it's a good idea. I mean, we, we have sudden link here and I think most of us would rather not, you know.
What is fiber, what is fiber, it's like my hat.
Right, right.
No one can afford it. I can't afford it. And I can't afford for the city to just buy a single, you know, whatever you want to call it.
Right.
But I can buy that and I can branch it out of my own network and that's all, that's all real. And to answer your question of coming up, you know, all that, I think this could only be something that can drive.
I agree. I agree. I think it could go in both directions and.
This mini trencher, it only digs the trench about wide enough to get this fiber in the ground. It's real small. And as we've talked in our side, and I don't even think I've talked to Mayor Cavalier about it, you could go put it through Smithers with a small mini trencher. That's what we're going to do in the valley. We're going to build North Street with it. You can do a mini trencher. You can, you can put that off at, at very minimal cost. Now, it's light expenses. It's down to the budget. The biggest problem is if your streets have bridges.
And to answer your question about what we're going to do with the information we glean, our comprehensive plan by state code, we have to revise it every year. It's our strategic plan. So so this process is to inform that and our, our planning officer and we have staff of our own of the, of the commission. We may end up having to bring somebody in, but we're not going to bring somebody in to do the information gathering, which we have done in the past, because the estimates we got, the cheapest one was $40,000 or somewhere around there. And I just feel like, you know, if if we take some initiative, we personally need to hear and want to hear the community input. And then then we'll, you know, take a look at the process of how to compile. We'll either do it ourselves or we'll, we might farm part of that out, but not the information gathering.
Two of your so much you mentioned, I just got a call from Jesse from W. Law Club. We started, Dr. Cavalier is president of this organization. We started the, I can't remember the regional.
Development.
Comprehensive plan. Jesse called me Tuesday this week and said he's ready to restart that now. So that, that commit can be a dollar bridge. Folks in the valley together, Smithers Dollar Bridge. And those folks, that would take a big load off of what you guys have to do. And that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor Cavalier, but that is on the bottom of W. D. They may want to do a bigger plan, but I know Jesse's all crazy about doing a regional comprehensive plan because there is none in the state of West Virginia. And he wanted that valley area to be first. So he's waiting on Mayor Cavalier and I can answer him if we want to start that back up. So I'm glad to hear this because that might be a vehicle that you all continue to launch.
Yeah, we, we certainly should drop on whatever he gathers, that's for sure.
Okay, Jenna.
Jenna, I got a question about the fiber. But what you're talking about fiber, you know, water sewer and fiber. And I'm.
She said power, I thought.
What?
Did she say power or fiber?
I think she said fiber. Is that correct? Fiber?
You got her muted again.
No, she muted herself. I'm going, I'm finding her.
And the. And the reason, the reason I ask is Mayor Ingram brought up the ability to say this is going to happen and then it not happen is the reason I'm asking. What type of, are you going to talk about fiber or are you talking about, what type of broadband are you talking about?
Yeah, so I mean, the goal for us in our communities is to identify the opportunity for, for dedicated fiber service. We have one provider in the Raleigh County area that can work on dedicated fiber and we're working with Region One on a project that would run dedicated fiber through, straight through the town of Hinton in Region One's territory. So, I mean, we, we're, I don't know if assessments have been done, but another opportunity that we have that we could look at is the ability to utilize AEP's Small Communities Fiber Project. And AEP actually has fiber covering our footprint, but they don't allow it for use except for internally with AEP. But they have a new program called the Small Communities Broadband Project that would allow communities that don't have other access to do their assessment and then determine whether or not they would be eligible to tap into the existing fiber through ATCO. So that's another conversation that if we can identify some of these areas that we wanted to study, we could look at. And in terms of a regional comprehensive strategy, I know that Region Four, well, all of the Regional Planning and Development Councils, but for Fayette specifically, Region Four does a comprehensive economic development strategy and that is on their website to look at as well. I'm, I'm not sure, I think they have to do that every five years. And so I'm not sure what that looks like in terms of their broadband and fiber plans, but that might be something to look at as well to make sure we're not duplicating some of the work that's already been done with comprehensive planning. So those are just a couple avenues that we can look at and involve the PDC in as well. But I do think it might behoove us to look at some of the communities and their ability to tap into this ATCO project as well because ATCO serves that territory and may already have active fiber.
Okay, we had a couple mayors who wanted to speak.
Yeah, William? William Hughes from PAX.
Yeah, how you doing?
Good.
Hey, thanks for tuning in.
No problem. Good to meet you.
Go ahead. You have a question for Jenna or you want to make a statement?
Oh, actually, I mean, I just wanted to talk about, we, we just recently went through, we're submitting a proposal to connect our water system to two other water systems. And, you know, the idea is that, you know, when we look back at the, the situation that happened in Charleston with American Water and their tank leaks and the contamination and the length of time that people were without water at the time, that was when I began looking at how close we were to connecting to two other water sources that would provide an emergency supply of water to be able to back up for the citizens. I think, you know, as far as infrastructure goes, being able to back up all of our communities, being able to tie this thing together is a, a critical, you know, element to being able to support the needs of the people in the, in each area. And our water, you know, we're only, I think, 300, 300 feet or so from one water source and we're about a mile from another water source. And we're currently connected to Beckley. So what we're looking at doing is, you know, is being able to reverse the flow of water and being able to provide the, the two other sources or three other sources actually as an emergency system. So that's basically it in a nutshell. I'm not sure if any of the other communities have infrastructure that is really close to where they could tie in. But, but I believe that's something that's really needed in our area because I, I believe every community has aging, aging water systems. really needed in our area because I, I believe every community has aging, aging water systems.
Okay. Um, Dr. Mayor Cavalier. If you can find Anne and run you through, please. Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. I, I only have two quick things. First of all, um, I'd like to understand the, the process by which projects get prioritized at the county level and um, if there is a priority list, uh, perhaps share that with the mayors so we can understand um, if our projects are, have made it to your attention and if they have where they are on that list. I'd also just like to plant the seed that we have a very small water project in need here. Uh, but it does help supply our sprinkler system uh, in our community center. Um, it's a forty thousand dollar project, so I, I just wanted to throw that out there and see how that gets perhaps on some list somewhere. So thank you.
Dr. Cavalier, that's one of the things that we're doing with this process. I, I was concerned and maybe there was one, but I don't know what it is and I've been here three months now. I think we're trying to figure out, we're trying to gather information from the communities to find out what their priorities are. Some of you have articulated them, some have it. Um, and then, and come up with our own process and set of priorities for the county at large. So that's what this meeting and one that we had earlier this week in general terms um, are about. And, and our comprehensive plan is going to provide our strategy, but then we want, we would like to break it down and maybe even form some working groups within the communities once we do the public feedback sessions where one or a combination of us will attend and try to figure out how we can um, help fund or facilitate in any way we can um, the things in these smaller communities that um, aren't getting, haven't been getting um, the same attention that, you know, that they should be.
Then I would highly recommend that you have a conversation uh, with Jesse Richardson at WVU. They helped many community, they've helped many communities do their individual comprehensive plans. Uh, and as Mayor Ingram mentioned, they've been working with multiple communities here in the Fayette part of the Upper Canal Valley to do a regional comprehensive plan. Maybe um, he would be interested in working through a countywide comprehensive plan.
Is, is he the one who provided the, he's, okay, so we've had a, a couple of bids for our comp plan and Jesse was involved in one of the bids. The WV extension had, it was around forty thousand dollars. It was pretty expensive. And that was just the bare bones service that it would provide. And then we had another bid at um, about seventy thousand dollars. So right now we're, we're going to gather information and then decide at what point of any that we need to bring in outside help or to compile it.
But you, you need to run your business, the, the county business the way you need to run it, but just a suggestion from the valley. Uh, you might have a conversation with President Guy and remind him of the um, loss that we suffered here in Fayette County with the removal of our campus to Raleigh County. And uh, you might ask if he would uh, appropriate the funds internally to help support Jesse Richardson's work here for Fayette County Commission.
That's a really good idea. Thank you for that suggestion.
Dr. Bota.
Yeah, and I would love to have, be the one to have that conversation because I'm a former resident of Montgomery. Somebody who grew up there and attended tech for a little bit.
Jen, I, I think what, you still there Jenna?
Yep, I'm here.
Had her later on, let her have. A journey, infrastructure, information or feedback from the municipalities or the communities as far as this development, uh, infrastructure development plan. Is that correct? That's mainly what you need today. Is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely. If we could, I mean, really get a list of, or, or start compiling a list and we're even happy to work on creating some sort of uh, public facing project list that can be shared. Um, if we can start working on a list of projects, we, I mean, I hate to, to say this this way, but we don't know what to include. If we don't know what communities are prioritizing. So somewhere along the line, we have to have the list of projects that are high priority, especially as it relates to um, you know, sites that we could potentially recruit new business to, so that we can really build out um, a, a comprehensive infrastructure plan for the region and specifically in Fayette County.
Okay, also John Tuggle is joined to call too. So uh, welcome Mr. Tuggle.
He's from Region Four.
Yeah, he's Region Four.
Hey, John, can you, oh, you probably can't unmute. You gotta be in.
I got it. I got it now. Um, good morning. I apologize. I've been broadbanding all morning, but anyway, uh, I'm here.
John, one of the things that I mentioned, um, and you can just mention this from, because obviously we work together on these projects, is that one of the things that NRG RDA needs right now is to sort of um, have the mayors of each of the communities discuss potential infrastructure needs in terms of sites that we could recruit new business to. Um, so that we can sort of put together a comprehensive strategy, especially around water sewer and broadband projects. Because we have an opportunity to request funding for acreage developed in an effort to recruit new companies. So I don't know, I think obviously on your end, that looks like um, very heavy on broadband projects as well. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but that's basically what I'm asking the mayors today is to, to help me identify some potential sites that we could get some infrastructure to, to recruit.
Uh, yeah, and we're definitely interested in that. We also have a couple of things in play. We're going to try to go after some uh, CBG mint money to identify all the, the utilities within the region. We feel like that's eligible uh, for that program. And we will be coming to each county to ask them to do an application within that county uh, for that money to basically uh, get on a GIS map all the water in the sewer. Um, broadband's a little bit tougher because that's private industry. See, it's hard to get them located if they don't want to be. But uh, anyway, we're, we're, we're hoping to help with that, identify the existing utilities and that would be a great, great uh, use for for what you're trying to do, Jennifer.
Yep, absolutely. We, we rely, just for reference to folks, we rely on Region Four a lot um, in Nicholas and Fayette Counties to help us map existing uh, infrastructure so that we can identify potential. When we, when we have a company that pinpoints a piece of property and we don't know what that infrastructure looks like, they're, Region Four can help us map that and identify what's there, working with utility providers as well. So that's crucial for us so that it doesn't um, cause any lag time in responding to a company that is looking at a piece of property.
Okay.
Okay, Sharon, do you have anything from Fayetteville that you would like to add? Just a second. There you are.
Hey, uh, good morning and thank you for inviting us to that, um, to this meeting. Uh, currently we're just, uh, we're really looking forward to the meeting on the twenty second uh, with Region Four. And um, of course, you know, we, we do not currently own uh, water or sewer facilities. Uh, that's all owned by West Virginia American. Uh, we are currently working with, um, you know, the GIS partnerships again through Region Four. One of the things we were hoping to partner with is on the broadband or fiber, especially since we're in such close vicinity to the courthouse. Uh, so the county and, and the town have worked together uh, many times in the past. Um, you know, so I think it makes sense with the broadband partnership, especially here. And if we can extend that out Gatewood and further. So we're just waiting to see, uh, you know, how we can partner with everyone. I, I, I would encourage uh, the partnership. Uh, I concur with Mayor Cavalier. Jesse Richardson has done an excellent job uh, for us in the town of Fayetteville, his team. So uh, they, they definitely cross their Ts and dot their Is. So we're just here to be part of the partnership and we're looking forward to seeing what opens up uh, and the possibilities uh, whether with Jenna and with John, you know, just um, count us in.
I, I want to, before I forget, I want to tell the mayors while you're on here that um, our meeting on, our special meeting on April twenty second with the um, Boy Scout camp, the summit people is going to be um, they gave a presentation to the CBB and boards and the um, Chamber Commerce Boards about business development opportunities up at the camp. And um, one of the things that's important to us as a commission is that we have to certify again to the auditor who then will in turn um, inform the legislature whether the Boy Scout camps in its tax exempt status is unfairly competing with Fayette County businesses. And so um, so our, we're having a meeting and, and we're going through our Chamber of Commerce to invite the business uh, members of the community. Of course, the public's willing to participate, um, welcome to participate. But um, we're going to have the Boy Scout camp here to try to go over that because from what we've been able to discern, we've had about three hundred dollars in taxes from the Boy Scout camp in the last year. We're not getting hotel motel taxes and some other things. There have been some creative legal opinions, I think, that have come in from their lawyers about whether um, their hotel qualifies, but um, those are some things that we're going to explore. We, you know, we obviously want to, want to keep them here and um, work with them, but I just wanted to let you know in case you want to tune into that special meeting. That's the thrust of the meeting. Um, for those of you in the valley or, or farther up um, Route sixty, I don't know how, how much this issue affects you, but I know it does the businesses here on the plateau. And I just wanted to let everybody know that that's going on. Is there anybody else, any other mayors who want to speak up? And it, and does anybody need um, Jenna's um, contact information to give her input on the um, infrastructure projects that you might have going on in your communities with which she might be able to help her include in, in her plan to, to get us community funding for it? Guess we're done.
Okay.
We've got somebody waving.
Hang on a second. I'm trying to get back to that.
Sharon.
I, I just wanted to clarify um, on that, I, I, John, wasn't, uh, Tuggle, wasn't your meeting also on the twenty second with Manchin's group?
Unmute John Tuggle.
Okay.
Gee, I heard you say that and I was a little alarmed.
No, well, that's why I was wondering, Allison, because I, I thought hit their meeting with Manchin uh, would be on the twenty second. So John, if I'm confused, please.
That, uh, no, the, the meeting with Senator Manchin will be May the eleventh.
May the eleventh, they, okay.
That'll be in Somerville at the uh, at the Armory.
Okay.
The twenty second is a Zoom meeting from nine to ten. They're to try to um, tell both the Region One, Region Four and our partners in, in Rock, Regional Optical Communications a good bit about, you know, what's been going on with broadband, how with the planning that's been done and the big picture stuff. Uh, plus uh, in, in order to, to make a, a pitch on how important it is to, to we feel like to spend at least part of the, the money coming down the pipe on, on connectivity. Um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's your money. It's the county's money. It's the town's money. You do with it what you want, but we feel like uh, this is a once in a lifetime situation that you can make a generation, generational difference for what's coming down the line in the future by improving that connectivity and, and catching up with a lot of the areas around us that we're behind on. So.
So everybody should be at that one, John, then. I mean, the commissioners as well as the mayors.
Yeah, we, we, we hope that we can get as many as possible to listen in, both the mayors and the county commissioners.
Okay, thank you for clarification and sorry for my confusion.
No, we have a special meeting scheduled on the twenty second.
I had it set to start at ten, so we.
Oh, good, good. So our meeting, our special meeting, I was wrong. It starts at ten AM on the twenty second. So um, we'll be able to do that, I guess, tune into that.
Well, and, and the reason it's on the twenty second and from nine to ten is because our congressional representatives are also going to be on that call to, to uh, state their, their opinion on the, the broadband connectivity issue also. That's, and that's the only day they could get, all get together. So that's why, why we're having it that day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we can do the Zoom from here, John. We'll just go from one meeting to the next. We may move the twenty second back until ten thirty.
Well, it starts at ten, so we'll be able to.
Yeah, so we, we can be, we can be just for it. That way we could, everybody will see everything.
Sounds good.
What time is the meeting with Senator Manchin at the Armory on the eleventh?
Oh gosh, now you've asked me something. I've had so many things going on. Uh, we'll, we'll get back to you on that. I'm not sure exactly. I'd probably, if I'm guessing, ten o'clock, but I can't remember for sure. Let me see if I can find that.
I think it's ten o'clock. I have it on my calendar at home, but I can't remember.
You didn't tell anybody about it?
I'm trying to get to it, man.
I just got it last night late.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it and I don't.
That's okay. You could follow up, you know, if you could send it to Amy and she'll let us know or great though, but thanks for the heads up.
Oh, I need, this is May the eleventh. It is at ten o'clock.
Great.
And that, that's with Senator Manchin and uh, the State Auditor McCuskey will both be there.
Jenna, do you have anything else for us?
I don't. No.
I like that about no. John, anything else?
I only did, on, on the broadband issue, we, we have a study that's on our website. It's a Regional Optical Communication uh, document that is a comprehensive study of, of our two regions, basically all of Southern West Virginia. Uh, that has a good bit of information on broadband we've developed already. Um, but that changes on a daily basis, but uh, that, that study's a real good uh, playbook for what uh, what we're looking for in connectivity in Southern West Virginia.
Okay. Any of the mayors have anything additionally? Mayor Ingram?
Oh, is, is the, uh, is there a copy of the uh, plan that Gina has? Is, is there a base copy of anything yet, or is that what we're trying to form?
We're trying to inform that.
Yeah. Dr. Mayor? Uh, she's not there.
Okay.
Uh, William? Anything else? Nope. Uh, Sharon, anything else? Okay. Uh, who else do we have on there?
Dollar Bridge didn't talk.
Is Meta Bridge still on there?
Meta Bridge, she's still on there? I keep forgetting about them.
They're on there. They're on me.
Yeah.
And the recorder from Dollar Bridge.
Is someone there?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, um, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, we sent you a letter explaining our needs here for the water system. I don't know if you, any of you have read it.
I've got it. I've got my notes. I'll bring it to you.
Uh, we have pla- I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
We have plans to renovate our water system and add to it. And we have everything ready to go, but the uh, part of the money we'd have to borrow, one point five million. And we didn't get enough grants. It's just simply, it's more than we can afford to pay the payments on that. So we were hoping the county commission could help us with that.
Well, I believe that we helped you with other funding that we're not receiving payments on either.
I'm sorry? Oh, I know what you're, I'm sorry, I wasn't here then, we weren't here then. But, yeah, you're right, but that was supposed to be linked to this rebuild. When we rebuilt it, when we got the money for the rebuild, that was supposed to have been repaid.
No, ma'am, it hasn't been.
But the project hasn't been completed. It hasn't even really been started, everything's ready.
Well, our, our loan was to help find all the water leaks and to help get you the lines that you needed, the new materials, and it was nothing based on new system.
I'm sorry?
We'll talk more about that. I'll, I'll call over and talk to you about that later on.
Okay.
All right, so.
Mayor Meta Bridge.
Jenna? I guess that's about done everything. So, we'd like to thank you for your time, of course, and all the mayors and John Tuggle for coming in. We definitely appreciate it. We're gonna, we're going to be getting together more often, especially with working on this comprehensive plan. For those of you that didn't hear, we're going to be doing a lot more than four stops. That's our minimum amount that we can do, but we want to max that out. We want to get as much input from everyone that we can and come up with a plan that will not only suit today's needs, but grow into tomorrow's needs because it's a 10-year plan. So, it's important that we take care of that. Brian Smith, you have your hand up?
Am I unmuted? Am I unmuted? Hey, John. Allison just left. Before you ended, I just wanted some more clarification on, Allison mentioned you guys put out perhaps a request for work regarding the comprehensive plan. And Jesse came back with 40,000, he said somebody else came back with 70,000. So, I just, could you elaborate on what you, what you asked for and what you're looking for? And also, before I get unmuted, also, the, a couple of cities have, have stepped up and advocated for Jesse Richardson. And I'm familiar with the program, usually it's, it's no cost or, or they get grant matching monies for Jesse. He's, he is, he is kind of a foremost authority in the region on comprehensive plans and a great guy to work with, as I think both city advocates have said. So, but my question is for you, are you guys at, actively looking for outside work? And you're evaluating Jesse and others? Go ahead.
We did put out a request for qualifications earlier this year, and we received two proposals in response to that. One from WVU and the other one was from, let me see.
I forget their name.
Is that it? Community Solutions Group. And those were the only two we received. We've discussed whether we were going to re-advertise it or whether we were going to try to, to do it in-house. We just haven't made a decision on that. Right now, you know, we're, we're still gathering information. So, we did put out a request and, and these were the only two proposals that we received by the deadline. Or at all, to my knowledge, but in response to the request, anyway. Does that answer it for you? Wait, we can't hear you, sorry. Are you muted on your end by any chance?
I got him.
Okay.
If the other two folks had spoke for Jesse, I mean, my impression was usually Jesse's work is covered by grants or is pretty low cost. And you said 40,000 is what he put in for you. What, what did those cities pay for, for Jesse's consultancy work? Are they still on the line?
I do not know, but that was what Mayor Cavalier was suggesting, that we, that we appealed to the president of university who withdrew and, and the president necessarily, but the university itself withdrew from its agreements with the city of Montgomery and the county on how to handle tech. But the, the cost of this was $40,380. And then there are additional, you know, we could add on some things, workshops and other things for, the total was, they gave us about another $17,240 worth of options to, to add on. So, I'm going to look into that a little more, but, but for now, like, both of these were just, we just felt like they were prohibitive. I mean.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do and, and given all the budget, I mean, you know, we can't fund the animal shelter, but we could pay somebody to put a document together. I mean, that's the kind of stuff that we have to take a look at. So, at that, it did go out. And we did receive those two bids and they were, I think, prohibitive.
Yes, thank you. One of the things that, that Mayor Ingram and I have learned with, with the WVU folks is if we work with those who we want to actually do a project, for instance, if we work with Jesse Richardson to understand his willingness and his resources to get involved with a project before we go further up the chain, we find that we get better success because if, if they go to Jesse and he says, nobody asked me about it and I don't have the funds and time to do it, that's the answer, we'll get back. But if we can talk to someone like Jesse and his group and he's in agreement with doing this, then when approached, he'll push the issue and, and try to get support to help us. And because Mayor Ingram and I just had conversations with him this week about re-engaging down here, I think now might be a good time to explore that opportunity. And if you wanted Mayor Ingram and I to explore that opportunity with Jesse Richardson before you formally make an ask, I think we'd be glad to do that on your behalf.
That would be very well welcomed. And also can either you or, or Mayor Ingram text me his phone number too, so I can have it. I know I have it somewhere, but I don't know where it's at.
And, and what is it you're looking for?
Jesse's phone number.
Oh, okay.
Just text me or, or Greg will give it to me while he's here. It'd be deeply appreciated. All right, folks, we're at high noon. If there's no more pressing issues. Oh, we do have some issues that we need to go over, but that'll end the workshop on economic development. So, thank you, everyone, for tuning in, we deeply appreciate it. Have a nice evening. And we've got some, a few more things to go over here. Uh, yes, but we need to take a little break first. Thank you, John. You're welcome. Okay. Can you mute that, please? Wonderful, they'll just mute it. Mute everybody. And then, Susie, I'm sorry, I did not hear your question.
Make it easier. Gabe, it, it didn't come up again, the ARC, you guys are, you guys are.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we're waiting on Anthony to, to give us his input on that.
And just so, and I'll tell everybody else, we.
Yes.
We, we got JFT to cover that $1,000.
Yes, he came and told us that.
Yeah, we did our due diligence and we were like, hey, just, do we qualify to get this money as the local town government? They're like, yeah. And then they awarded it. And then they paid to us like a day and a half later, like, well, actually. So, it was like, why don't you ask them?
Yeah.
See if they'll come to it.
Yeah, but he.
That's Gabe and I. Then, does that look good? I mean, April, you know. Because they'll take, if you need.
The what now?
$600,000.
For the Valley? What about the one over in Valley Bridge? Can you text him, please, and ask him? Well, just text him and ask him. Anthony?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for spelling out. So, I told everybody, and, and Ruth, would you please send out to all municipalities? They want us, or Region Four and to NRG RDA and to John. Can't think of his name, Oak Hill. It's got that old school that if they want a letter of support, it needs to be here 14 days before the due date. They just can't. John David, thank you. It just can't be here one day before it's due. I blew up a damn yesterday. That's true ethical violation. But anyway. Shouldn't, if we need to do, if we wanted to do a, an executive session, do we still need to have it for ourselves? Or if we want something like that, can we just?
I think it needs to be on the agenda.
Okay.
But, but I still think. I mean, something like that needs to be addressed immediately.
Yes, you did.
Kind of rethought things a lot, although it might be a better option. Because I have been thinking, if you send out a letter and somebody says, well, here's a $20 gift card, it's for telecommunications, telecommunications, and then we turn around and donate it to Mike them. Another charity. Basically, yeah, that potentially is a problem because they donated for a specific purpose and then we essentially changed the purpose. So, it would probably be best if we just.
Send it back.
Send it.
All right, good, we're on the same.
Yeah, I read that, you're talking about the 911 center.
Yeah, I read that, what you said. That, I mean, any type of ethics class that you go to teaches that. Someone.
It didn't take much, it didn't take much digging on the, on the ethics commission's website.
But it didn't seem like even what they was asking for was really ethical.
I don't think it is.
I don't think it is either.
I mean, based on what I saw on the ethics. And according to Jennifer. $31,000 altogether. And that's looking at.
Yeah, I know, I, I always wanted to tell you, tell you and your people that, well, you know, thank you so much.
You're, you're welcome, but my question is. I don't understand why you don't have enough people. And all they're doing is trying to bring money in. But just as an example, there were two people that were locked up because of essentially probation regulations. And you get on the, you get on the Region One website and they're identified as the visual correction windows, which means the stage should be fully built. They currently fit to build the building. What I'm going to do is I asked Ruth to get me all the invoices for 2020.
Can you go back?
I think the worst that's going to happen is you're going to say, sorry, you waited.
I'm going to tell you what, you've earned a lot of money out of it. I'm going to tell you what.
But I'm inclined to need to go back.
Yeah.
I mean.
We made that pick the soup once.
I don't know exactly what Jeff did about a year ago. He did something, he did something to save some. Prior to that, I honestly don't think anybody put any time into scrutinizing.
No, you're probably right, and I'm going to tell you, I've seen some of the other jail bills from the other counties, I've been looking at the other counties. Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, ours, ours is a lot higher than that. Yeah.
Well, part of, you know, part of that, you have to consider the judges you're dealing with. It's not, it's not just simply a function of. I mean, Judge Blake, when he comes to sentencing, is just somewhat harsh. And I had two sentencing hearings in front of him today and both of them went to prison. But that's, that's state money, not county money. But I, I don't think it would be an idea for us to actually go back for her, but I can see what's there.
No, I agree with you.
Because here's my question. If, if we had gone through those bills and communicated with them.
We'd have paid.
Hell, yeah. And we would, and wouldn't we get it back? And like I said, sometimes, sometimes I think it's a nice mistake, but other times it's, I just don't follow it. I mean, I'm not saying that the region of jail authorities is purposely, purposely trying to take money from us. I just think it's a lack.
Their process might be, you know.
It's no skin off their hide.
No, that's, you know, that's what the issue is. It never was that.
But how many other counties are being done this thing wrong?
Maybe that's why they have X amount of dollars in their budget that doesn't get touched.
It kind of makes you wonder, yeah, whether or not to file a deal.
Yep.
I think the legislature made, made that.
They, they made the change and decided that instead of having county judges, we have the regions. But then there's a whole larger list of causes that would create it. I mean, transporting inmates under your barriers.
Yeah.
I got paid from the time I climbed into my truck to the time that I got there to meet with them and then got paid driving back. I got paid, I got paid for my time and mileage. So, it's, it's about a 45-minute drive.
Nobody has feelings here.
But I, I think it would be worthwhile to go back further than just last year.
If you can.
I mean, it's not something you're necessarily going to be able to do all at once and immediately, but I think certainly we could do it at a time.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, and, and the worst that's going to happen is we'll find out who the judge is. If I was a bad man, I wouldn't do it on my.
That will tell you. If you continue what you're doing, I think it's going to turn out best, best to you and the corporation.
I mean, I'm, we're all adults here, I'm partly self-motivated. I mean, you know what I mean. I don't want to come in front of you guys and say, hey, how about kicking some of them.
That's exactly what the motive is. But you're doing your job.
But part of it too.
The people of Fayette County.
It could solve the funding issues for Amber.
You're right. You're right.
We're currently dealing with.
Yeah, you're actually correct.
Part of it too. We had actually got this on the calendar for January, into COVID. But we're going to meet with, our meeting with Judge Ewing next week. Sheriff, he's supposed to be there. And basically, we're going to try to meet at least weekly to go over the jail. And see if there's people locked up that we can get out. And I'm not talking about, you know, somebody who's charged with murder or rape. We're just going to look the other way and say, oh, sure, we'll let them out. But there's a lot of people lined up in there that. I mean, we're talking about prior to the. I mean, we're talking about prior to the conviction. There's no reason. If there's, there's police additional restrictions.
And now you mentioned that Allison wrote something up the other day. That is, I mean, that's something that I think's a great idea. She said that, I mean, that's a serious. I'm, I'm, I'm waiting to hear from her or somebody on it, when she mentioned that, I, I'm just mad because I didn't come up with the idea. Yes, it does. I mean, how would we do that if you talk, I mean, is, is it something that they report, Senator, or you?
The GPS monitor is generally done through directions, so it would simply be a function. The county commission writing in the check instead of the defendant writing in the check. Another, let me qualify this by. But if the county. When we get to the end of this. We can get, I mean, we show exactly what the county commission pay. I can ask that to exist. Yep, and that's why I said, well, because you may just get that one back.
I'm gonna tell you what, if we can, when I was getting ready to go with, if we got public service out of them. Or what is it called?
Community service.
Community service, you know what I mean? If we can get community service out of them, I ain't worried about the other part.
Get some more support for it.
Yeah, if we got, if, if, if four days a week, two days a week, or three days a week, if they do community service for what the county commission deems them. Is that the right word, deems them to do? We save money, we can do that, we save money, I mean, I might be wrong, but I mean, I mean, uh.
I don't know to what extent they do.
Well, what I'm saying is the county commission. We could probably. We need to, I guess, to be ready to talk to them. Yeah. And see how, how we can work this out.
We, we're gonna start, like I said, we've got the meeting next week and that's, that's the set of future meetings where we're basically.
That is great.
Well, I don't care. I don't care how the money's spent, let's just.
We're not wasting, what was that, we're spending?
Yeah. We're gonna board on an end.
Form letter to. Spike it, spike it.
It's not a function of being self. I had two sentencing hearings today, and I just told you, just in both of them.
I didn't want to announce, but the senior.
Yeah.
Director at WU, it's a new position, she reached out last week and was like familiar with the project and.
But we can.
Was interested in, like, down the road trying to work with training extension agents at the farm, and just wanted.
Are you going down to the valley on Saturday?
On the seventeenth.
Okay. I'm going to sell there. I don't have anything planted other than onions.
Yeah.
And I ain't got enough onions to play.
I ran into your dad, I tried to supply.
Yeah, he told me, yeah.
He says, I remember her.
She's a hardware, I said, yeah, that's why I'm glad to see her. That's why I was trying to look at you a girl.
Yeah.
But anyways, I don't know if I'll make it or not, it depends on, on the thirteenth and the fourteenth.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I just wanna go on table and see what it's like down there, really, you know, we're not, we can have a little bit of stuff to sell, but. I'm trying to get an America member, because we're getting fooled, you know, there's somebody in the village like, hey, you know, it's been set up, and then Ace just came up this day and I'm like, oh, we need somebody to. Kind of run around, do that kind of stuff, because we're already maxed out.
Yeah, we'll just make sure, you know, I want to tell you that I'm gonna set up down there. Which is good.
Yeah, I'm excited, I think.
I got, uh. I've got like four hundred tomato plants coming up. Two hundred pepper plants. I'm planting an acre and a half of corn.
What form are you dismissed?
Sweet, good, sweet, salt. Cream and sugar or sugar?
Peaches and cream?
Yeah, peaches and cream, I knew it was something, but I got that seed early. I've got, uh, rum of two beans and half runners. I'm gonna do an acre and a half of those. I had two hundred pound of potato seeds. Darn pigs got out and ate my potato seed. I said, Dad, that was an expensive loss.
Yeah, most expensive.
And I think it's great that you're doing it too.
Yeah, and I've got, uh, I've got four salesmen that have pigs. So I said, if any of them don't do well, they have less than ten, they're gonna be bacon.
There you go. Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, I'm ready to go. Okay, let's get back to it. Hi, Greg. Uh, well, be careful. Alrighty. Yeah. Yeah, when you started running down the road, you said, oh, where's that? See you later.
Well, I bumped into it first and then.
Anthony, uh, have you had a chance to look at that? Uh, ARC power.
Which document is that?
That one you have in your hand.
The sprouting farms, MOU.
Yeah, I looked at it, I don't see any issues with it, the only question I have is the answer that, or, I'm just curious, who's gonna be responsible for preparing these reports that we require. Or getting the base of, I don't have any issues with it.
Okay. So, no issues from our prosecutor? What's your? Ms. Taylor, what's your?
In the, well, in the covenant too, did you look at that?
We do them both at the same time?
Um, no, but they are both related, they're both related to the same project, the same grant.
Yeah, on, on the covenant, the only thing that I just want to make sure the commission understands is that. This, this covenant lasts for fifteen years and it is owed its obligations on the county commission. Specifically, continuing with the maintenance and repair of Memorial Building. No visual or structural alterations, and you maintain the property without the prior written permission of the state of stored preservation officer. The county is also agreeing that the state of stored preservation officer agents and designees shall have the right to inspect the property at any reasonable time to determine. Whether or not the conditions of the agreement are being met. And paragraph four, just basically, I mean, I don't know, I can see the message begin there, it talks about discrimination. That, that's gonna apply whether it's at any period of time. And then lastly, this is apparently one to be. Taking from this next line, it says that this covenant is intended to encumber the title to the property, so I'm assuming this is gonna be recorded. And it will stand as, not necessarily a lien, but it will stand as.
Right.
Restricted covenants on the, on the use of the property.
I think, I think we're gonna have to discuss that special session, I don't think he needed that to be approved today, the other one, I guess we can.
Yeah, the first one, we had said we could postpone it for twenty, and I think that's a good idea, but he said that we signed these previously, so I don't like so.
Well, and I don't think we can commit to more than a year at a time on certain things either, so I, I mean, I'm not sure what we're. There's, I have a lot of questions.
I mean, it, it doesn't appear to me that it's going to cost the county money, because I read this, it says that the, the cost is going to be paid through land and native assistance. Uh, through the state and through, uh, the US Department of the Interior, National Park Service, but, but it does impose obligations and restrictions on the county commission and the property.
Yeah, which is an issue.
I think that's standard ship of writing though.
I think we'll wait on it too.
Okay.
Okay, so. Which one do we want to go ahead and do?
It's the power.
We had already postponed the ship O one, um, till the twentieth, so we can just.
Yeah, that one's on hold.
Meet on that.
What about the, uh, power grant, power planning grant?
If, if Anthony didn't have any problems with that and no financial matches required, then I go ahead and move that we approve that item.
One second. Okay, we have a proper motion and second. Excuse me, on the, uh, ARC power planning grant. Uh, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Hi.
Just to clarify, that was like the approval of the MOU, the fiscal sponsorship, but then also the authorizing signatures of Gabe, the.
Yes.
Just sign?
Yep.
Okay, you already got it. Alright, uh, next is discussion of future agenda items.
I gave you an updated one this morning. I completed it out of some crap on Wednesday.
Tuesday, April twentieth?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I just made the covenant, that you just postponed, I'm just glad it was the last, so that'll be number six on the exhibit list.
On the twentieth, there's a typo at the ten o'clock.
Where you go.
It says postponed.
Oh, that'll get, that'll get, uh, changed, fixed whenever I switch it over to words.
How, does, do we need a whole hour, like, I, this is something that I, I was mentioning this morning and I actually had a dream about it, it's that important to me how long these meetings are. Last night, my dream was that I was the only one who showed up and the other two commissioners weren't here and the meeting lasted an hour. But anyway.
So she was saying that we told you.
No, I was just, I thought, wow, this will go faster. Um, but I'm not sure the CBB discussion needs to be an hour, or is this where we're getting presentations of the websites and stuff, is that what that is?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that, so where Becky's gonna walk through? Okay, and, um. What is, when we say lay the levy, what does that mean?
All that means is you're, you're setting the rates, the tax rate for you, basically, but you also need to sign those budget letters.
Mm-hmm.
That's all that could be.
Sent out, but.
So laying the levy is just, this is our tax rate you sign.
So do we have to, do we need to analyze whether they're sufficient, or is it something we're just?
No, it's set.
It's already set, state code and all that.
And Ms. Taylor, the eleven thirty, the potential eleven thirty, since we're doing a comprehensive plan over, we may not even need to look at, I want to just see what you think about that, John.
I agree with you.
Since we're going ahead and you, you put that on the agenda from what, the seventh, is that what you did?
I think so.
The tenth and the twenty, uh, twenty first.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the, so it's on for the twenty first.
Yeah, so if you wanna just do away with that, I don't have a problem, because that's gonna be, comes from a comprehensive plan anyway, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and. Okay. The Bridge Day Courthouse property request, Becky, Becky's gonna be here for, with the CBB, she'll be able to address that.
On your updated one that I gave you this morning, I kind of referenced, like, the nine thirty is on the, there's something on the exhibit list for him too, and then.
Oh, wait. I don't have the updated one up, well.
Oh, I, I just set it up there, it probably got covered up. Nine ten, sorry. Yeah.
That's gonna be a lengthy discussion.
Well, we got, we got another response late last night. From Ann Erle, um, which was positive. That she talked to the supervisor in charge of that, and that they're gonna be looking for our report so they can push it through. My concern is what you and I talked about yesterday, is that Mr. Jimin. Got money that was ours, gave it to Greer River County, and now he wanted to turn around and walk away. And I got problems on it.
That's part of the stuff that I think needs explaining, like, I think the whole thing needs explaining, it's actually mapped, it was supposed to be a timeline of the whole process.
Yes.
So it's in the minutes Amy took, she found out on one of the calls from Lady December.
Yeah.
And we don't have that timeline, so.
And speaking of minutes, what, what, what's the, uh, what's the thing on it, what did you say?
We need our minutes, okay.
I know, I know.
Do you, do you need some help with them?
No, I'm gonna go through them, I just told you I had some issues with my computer and I haven't given them one to buy me.
Okay. But if you need help, I mean, let us know.
I will, I will, it won't take me long, I just need to be able to sit down somewhere and, where I can sit and work on it.
That's why I sort of skipped them this morning.
Yeah, that's all that, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, they're supposed to be done.
You didn't hear that prosecutor?
We ran afoul of the timelines, big time.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
First, I hear what.
What? Yeah, hear what, yep, what? Uh, speaking of hearing, that's what I'm saying is, well, what?
Sorry, for the CBB thing, it's some presentation, we weren't sure what that's supposed to be.
Well, they, they, uh, they, I think we put them back on there to come back and talk to us about some things, but then the whole website thing got. Uh, when I was presenting with, with cucumber coming presented, it all got tangled up, and I said, well, show me on the twentieth. So he's gonna show me the, uh, Pat, what's his last name again?
Strader.
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 Strader's.
Digital relativity, like.
So he's supposed to be here that day too?
Well, he, he said on the meeting.
Okay.
Or he may do it on the, he said he was gonna be here to, uh, show how the CBB website works, ask him some other questions.
Who else do you want here at the ten o'clock?
Well, Becky's gonna, Becky's gonna be here.
Okay, and, yep, and Lisa with, or, sorry.
I don't know that that's, we're, I don't know that, does she get, she gets some of the funding as well? She does, but we're not talking about that right now, we're talking, we were like looking at, um, any issues with possible duplication of effort and. I mean, what do you think?
I think that she was, uh.
Well, because Pat, Pat manages both of those websites, so if he's here, he should be able to speak to the content on the web.
Would you like me to change the word?
At least the, well, no, he doesn't provide the content, they provide the content.
Did you find those other minutes when the two ladies from the CBB were here, one from Raleigh County, one from Fayette County?
That's.
She was the regional, not, yes, yes.
Yeah, visit Southern West Virginia, did you find those minutes?
That's two twenty-two when they were here.
Yeah.
What do you need to know about it?
Uh, there was a statement made by, um. The lady from the visit Southern West Virginia.
That's Lisa Strader.
That if the vacation home tax plan passed, that they would not need the extra percentage.
I don't even remember her saying that.
And the only thing, if we don't give the seven and a half percent, then she said something about lodging.
She doesn't receive, but, yeah, we, Lisa doesn't receive the money from us, Becky does, and then Becky provides money to Lisa to buy into their, yeah, so. Right.
And that's why the lodging wouldn't be advertised for Fayette County in the Southern, visit Southern West Virginia.
Well, what I wanted is what she didn't give is what each, what each of the nine participants pay. They never gave us that. Did he give us any information on that? Well, I already seen what I believe Nicholas County pays. Well, I already seen what I believe Nicholas County pays. I looked, I looked at their budget, but I mean, I, I, I just wanted a breakdown of what all the nine participants pay. Maybe we can go online. Get it out of their budgets.
So this.
Nicholas County, well, I wish I had that book here.
What do you want this ten o'clock agenda item to say? Can you just say the, I mean, should it reference advertising?
I guess a continuing, continuing financial discussion, I guess. Because it, it realms around the seven and a half percent, realms around how, how much all the other nine participants are paying. And. I guess I'd like to see their financial statements, because they said they, they gave them to us.
It was in that booklet.
Yeah, I know, but I just don't.
You wanted them to see, you wanted to see the, the website and how it.
Website and how it works. Did Austin ever email you back or anything?
That's what I was getting a check. I'll shoot you another one.
And this, I started to get in touch with Sarah yesterday about the eleven o'clock, and I got, wasn't able to get in touch with her yet. About these properties down in Scarborough.
Did you get my text, Mike? Mike, did you get my text earlier? I mean, I sent it to that old number yours. I probably did, you know, I sent to you and Rod.
Ruth, what else did we ask for when she called me?
I figured you must not have because you would have answered me by now.
On my phone and you emailed her and requested some stuff.
It's just because I, because it was a group text, and the last group text I sent you and Rod was to the old number. I just now sent it.
Okay, but, right, right, they were supposed to have a letter or something when they come the twentieth to show that. I think it said just one letter stating that we can't have that, basically. And the other thing was, the other nine participants, what they're paying into this.
What the other nine participants are paying.
Yeah, yeah.
Now what? On the eleven o'clock item, are they coming back to us for, with information on mitigating that one property? Because that's the only one in question now, right?
Yeah.
Getting the information prior to.
Yeah, and I don't know that they need, you know, a whole lot of time, I mean, fifteen minutes, they should be able to tell us what's being done and, you know, that sort of thing. But. Okay. And then these are the. The, he wants to know the not, the other participants, what they are contributing. Dilapidated buildings we have on there.
There's nine other participants that are contributing something in order to get the.
Advertising.
At lodging or something, right in it.
Is this number four under, on the exhibit items, is it, does it meld with the nine ten agenda item?
Yeah, he sent that to us the other day and asked us to get it signed right away, and I said, no, we can go on the twentieth, because I already posted the agenda. And, but then in the meantime, that nine ten kind of came up that we need to.
Okay.
Actually have him on the agenda, so we can probably address, just leave it on the exhibit list, and then just address it while during his. His item.
No, I really like that bang the desk thing or the table.
Bang the table.
Yeah, I really like that.
We've already got the eleven thirty for discussion about. The U D C stuff. That was taken off?
The U D C discussion on the thirty, did you not say that was taken off?
Yeah, it's taken off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can do.
Yeah, we're gonna start on that.
Should I just put discussion and decision regarding information from Attorney Stephen New, hurry, Menden, and then get called into the executive session?
Yeah, you can post what it's about, and then we also need to have an executive session on that restricted covenant.
I see.
Thing.
No, I'm waiting.
They are nonprofit, right?
Yeah. C V B.
What is this, number three on the exhibit list, dilapidated reappointments and buildings discussion, what's that?
So all of the people that are on the dilapidated, they all acquire at the same time, so we need to update those. And then Angela and I are both on it, just kind of as placeholders, because we can't ever get through them, but she is kind of in charge of. The database for all the dilapidated, and she's our contact for those. And then. I'll have to check with her, I can't remember what the buildings discussion was, we just put that on there so we would remember it. Let me see if I can get her.
On the twentieth. Will you be around to help me with the dilapidated building discussion?
We just, we just need to set it for a time.
Time yet, just, that's why if you could look at your schedule and talk to Amy and work around with her and give her. What you're available so we can work on that together. Fantastic. Fantastic, I'm glad to hear that.
We need to be in executive session for, I mean, we need to talk about the covenant anyway, so we just need to schedule it at a time when it work for you, and we can just tell us when, like, I mean, we do it eleven fifteen.
John, I didn't want to misspeak, and I thought this maybe was the case, but the buildings discussion was something that you had asked for, so do you remember what your specifics were on that?
Did you hear her? She wants to know what your specifics are on what you wanted to discuss regarding dilapidated buildings.
Yeah, that's your discussion, the dilapidated building.
Yeah, well, Anthony and I are going to be discussing that. There's some things that the commission may have to be adding. So it, it's just a huge discussion, and then we can do the decision at another time.
General discussion regarding the ordinance and perhaps priorities as far as which property we want to address.
Yeah.
It's good to have lawyer around.
Are we talking about revise, like revising the ordinance or reviewing the ordinance?
Yeah, we may be revising ordinances and maybe adding ordinances, it just depends on what we end up with.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna do that, you know, I want a copy of what we. Look at it.
All you need is.
And any recommended, especially based on your experience with the municipalities, any recommended, recommended changes to it.
You're getting into my discussion.
We've, but you know, but, but given that this is coming up really soon, do you need more time to do that? Because that's the twentieth, so that's.
I mean, it's, the ordinance, I'm familiar with the county's ordinance, because it's essentially what we used to draft the ordinance down in Smithers. So, I mean, it was, it was tweaked to meet our needs and to make sure that it applied to provisions of the code of the program to municipalities, but I'm fairly. I'm fairly familiar with it now, and I think the one thing we might want to look at was one of the other, one of the other, and of course, it's. The name of sheriff's here, this involves him, but one of the other things that Smithers did, and I know Oak Hill has done this. Ordinances that have adopted that. And buildings being vacant, and it essentially provides property owners with incentive to deal with issues. And to deal with vacant properties, not leave them vacant. But, you know, like I said, that, there's going to be enforcement aspect of that. But that's something we should, that's something we can also discuss, is whether or not we want to implement new ordinances. And I can certainly provide you with some ideas of some of the ordinances we passed in Smithers to address the problems.
Moving on to May seventh now, or?
Well, we have that special, yeah, we got something, please sir.
Do you have the attorney? Are we on the.
Twenty-second.
Could we go back to the? To the seventh, please?
To May seventh?
Uh, no, to.
Twentieth?
The twentieth, yes. I want to make sure that we have two executive sessions on there.
Well. Again, we're not really supposed to put executive session on the agenda.
We'll just move to go into executive session.
Yeah, you have to have that, so there it is. And so then the covenant, how would you like it and where would you like it?
I'd like that whenever we're gonna do dilapidated housing, so we can put the covenant on there and just know that we're gonna do the dilapidated discussion whenever Anthony's here.
Which covenant is it that we're going into executive about? Okay, so that needs to just be postponed from, that's got, you've got that right here.
Right.
Postponed from.
Right.
So you can call executive, because it'll be on the, on the agenda.
We'll end up with two.
So you've got them, they're both there, both topics.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and then here is the twenty-second, I'm it.
Now, why are we, no, I have a question about this. Why are we doing exonerations and stuff? Oh, that's on the seventh.
I, no, this is the second I just haven't changed, or the twenty-second I just haven't.
Okay, because I, I don't think, when we have a special meeting, I don't think we need to have.
He's not supposed to be on there, but I leave roots on there in case something comes up.
So can you change that to Thursday?
Yeah, I'm, I'm changing it right now. I just created this one this morning.
And you change your post date too.
She just created the document there. She said she just created the document this morning, so she's just putting it up here for us.
We've kind of decided that we're just gonna leave that on there, no matter what kind of meeting it is.
Yeah, just in case.
Yeah. And then, so, let me come over here. We have to, talk about the election now. So, and we'll might bring Michelle into this. So if. We end up having to have a special election this summer, we need to start planning, and it's a good thing you're having this special meeting, so we can put the order to contact the executive committees.
We may not know by then, because they're gonna be going into another special session.
Well, then they're gonna have to change the date, yeah, because.
I, I know that the.
But I have to plan ahead and have this here in case, yeah.
I know that the, the state is fighting in, in front of itself, different areas, because they don't have money to pay for it. And you know the counties aren't gonna pay for it, because if it passes, we're gonna lose two point seven five million dollars off our budget for next year.
Well, by code, if they call a constitutional convention, the state has to pay for it. They're calling for these constitutional amendments. I mean, that's, that's in, that's in the constitution, that's not even in code, that's in the constitution, so. But yes, and they have to publish that three months in advance, in, in every paper in which, in every county in which there's a newspaper, they have to publish these in. So those would have to be in the papers by April the twenty-fourth.
They're not gonna have time?
No.
So.
So it's, it's.
Well, but if they pass it in those amendments.
As of today, we have the plan for it.
Then, then they have to do it.
Because we've got to get.
And I guess, I don't know, then yell at them if they don't get it done. We are all, we are all bated, bated breath, we are waiting, like, I've checked my.
Yeah, right. You just want practice.
There are six potential, the, the one that they have tacked the special. Yes. It ranges from everything from incorporating churches to getting rid of, I think what it does is it changes the definition of what personal property is, so that they can then get rid of making you pay on your. Cards, and I think that's how the amendment's gonna be worked. But it's, there's six different ones that they're looking at putting on this special session, on the special ballot.
You know. They can't even take care of a budget. How can they take care of personal property in Fayette County?
It is, it is what it is, is we are just trying to, at this point, at this juncture, for us, trying to plan. Six months worth of work into a hundred and six days, so. Because there are very specific timelines of when things have to happen, which are codified in, for an election, and that's what Amy, that's why we, even though we don't know if it's happening or not, we've got it on there.
We've got placeholder, just in case we have to.
And we can always, if it, if it doesn't happen and it's posted, you just.
Use the machines?
That makes sense.
Yep.
Or will we use just a piece of paper?
Or we'll use machines, I mean, it's gonna be six different, I mean, we could do paper, but do you want to set hand count?
Heck no.
Okay, then, will we use a machine?
Well, you said a lot of counties have gone strictly over to like, everything, yeah, they don't.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, with, that's, the compilation, you know, different, that's something I might see us try to go for, but we would need.
On the Boy Scout item.
What does this need to be called?
We need to say, discussion with. Business owners and the summit about summit business development and impact on. What is it called?
Summit, that's what it's called.
An impact on community businesses.
Are they aware they're supposed to be here?
Becky is sending out an email, I, I warned her about it, I forwarded one of our exchanges to her, just saying we're, we hadn't set what date it was, but I forwarded her this morning and told her the date. Although Becky, I know she's still on the call, it's at ten and not at nine like I sent you. Hotel motel tax.
Yeah.
Yep, and they also have these family tents up there, just like they're building over at A O T G and getting permitting for, and they're not paying hotel motel tax on that. We've had three hundred dollars in tax revenue from the summit in the past year. Yes, that was me also. Apparently, they have been advised that if they rent out the whole facility, that they don't have to pay the bed tax, the hotel motel tax. I know, well, so anyway. But then, but then I, you know, I learned that there are people who are going to, to ski, and, and they're Boy Scouts and they're renting, and, you know, there's still no tax, so. No, no, I was, I just was up there for a presentation, business development presentation, that the business development director, new guy. Presented up there to the C V Bs and boards in the Chamber of Commerce boards, and during that, I asked some questions. And that's where I got these answers, and that's the reason I, I asked for a special meeting on this, because we have to give input as a body to the auditor's office that will in turn give input to the legislature, West Virginia legislature, about whether the tax exempt status is resulting in unfair. Business practice or disadvantage to our community businesses. Now, I know that, you know, from everything I've learned, the first time they had a summit up there, an org, I don't know whether it was the International Jamboree or the National Jamboree or what it was, but. In two thousand thirteen, they didn't let anybody leave the campus, which, which totally restricted our ability to. or the National Jamboree or what it was, but in 2013, they didn't let anybody leave the campus, which, which totally restricted our ability to, you know, our community's ability to benefit from it. They changed that for the one in 2017. And then they've got a couple of things this year, like I don't think they're going to be able to put the international and the national or something. There's, they're going to have a year coming up where, because of COVID, that they had to postpone one and they would have two in the same year, so I'm not sure. But they have all these other business development ideas about, gosh, Tough Mudders, Jeeps, fours, I have notes somewhere, but they have all these music festivals, all these things that, that would appear in one way or another to compete with some of the local businesses or some of the efforts, you know, we have Mountain Music Festival, some of the other ones. And I had just mentioned, you know, be sure you don't, you know, schedule something that conflicts with, you know, longstanding, you know, festivals we already have here. But I just, I asked that, that they meet with us because we have to make that decision and that recommendation to the Auditor's Office about the tax exempt status, and we have to do that every five years. So I want to engage them in the discussion rather than just unilaterally decide, and I want to try to get some metrics and engage the business community as well, just so we can get some idea. But I know that we are not benefiting from it in the way that we had hoped or intended to benefit from it, that much I do believe. Because we're not getting hotel motel tax, they're standing up these family tents that are kind of like canvas things, they're almost like little yurt-type buildings. And, and they're going to be, you know, I think renting them. And, and so we have businesses here down in this area, you know, that aren't up on the mountain there, that are paying bed tax for those types of lodging. And I, you know, so that's, and that may be something that we don't necessarily have to resolve on that, that day. I mean, maybe you and their lawyers should get together on some of that. But, but I want them to come down and talk to us, and I want the business community to be able to talk to them about these initiatives that they have going and any potential unfair competition or anything like that, I want to discuss that issue. Hotel motel tax, I think, is something that, you know, we're going to have to work out, you know, with their lawyers and you. Maybe even Hillary Wyatt, depending on what you think, you know, I said maybe Vivali Wyatt, depending on what you think, you know, we need to address there, but. It is, it is, and it's something like, you know, we're, we haven't been getting everything on all the vacation rentals in the county, but also, you know, we have, you know, they have a motel up there, I was, I was in it. And they have, you know, tents that I passed on my way up there, and, and they are receiving revenue from these things. And, you know, they have been given, in all fairness, a legal opinion that, that, that they're exempt for some reason. But I, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's necessarily the case. Yeah, and I did get, the guy referenced when I was up there, he said he got an email, Sheriff Furlie, you'll be interested in this, he said he got an email from our, from the county, and that he thought it might be the tax office saying that, you know, kind of confirming that decision. And the only email Becky Sullivan was on it, she forwarded to me this morning she got, had nothing to do with that at all. I mean, she just, she, somebody in your office just said that, uh, that they report 1.2% tax on special activities, that that's it. You know, so she didn't come and say, that's all y'all owe us, like as the guy implied to me. But I'm waiting for him still to provide me the email that he referred to, that he said came from the county saying that they don't have to pay hotel motel tax. I don't believe that exists, but.
Well, they've had the events.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was like 2019?
Yeah, it was 2020, actually, it looked like.
They've had those events with all the liquor, all the beer out there, make sure they pay taxes on that too.
You're talking about the, y'all were talking, I'm trying to do three things at one time here. You're talking about the Boy Scouts, right?
Yeah.
It was state, uh, there was a, there was a bill that states it down there, basically, and it was voted on. I don't know whether y'all got to that or not. Basically, it's, the legislature had it done through the, uh, one year when we voted.
We put it on a constitutional amendment and not charged in taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
But not on hotel motel, was it, or?
Only, I think the only thing that's just allowed to charge is you sell a shirt down there, and I may be wrong, I checked on this when I first come in. You sell a shirt down there, you get the tax off to sell a shirt or something like that.
Well, then we need to talk to our legislators because there's just someone's off with that.
That only thing, Riley, isn't one of those. Well, we didn't, we didn't get what everybody thought we was going to get anyway. I mean, I knew we weren't going to get it, they said we were going to get flooded with people and everything. You know, it was a bunch of malarkey.
Well.
I've looked that word up.
So that is something I think we need to look at, and even if, even if that exists, then we might need to ask that they revisit it, but, but.
Talk to Tom Fasten.
I will. And, but as far as this, the certification we have to do, that was the thrust of this meeting, is to get the business development guy in and our business owners to, to give us some input to inform that recommendation that we made.
That written is to be brought up and brought out.
Amy wants to know if it can be included in our special election.
I don't think there's anything you can do about it, but I hope you can find a way, I hope we can find a way to do something.
There's got to be some, I mean.
I had Eddie Young do a, a spread sheet on how much money the county has lost from that. Uh, it was $30 million up to the end of either 2020 or 2030. I went and handed down a projection, I had him do, uh, what we lost prior to, up to 2020, and then a projection up to 2030. It was about $30 million.
Amy, were you, have you been in touch with them yet, with Bill Garrett about this meeting?
Do I have his information?
Yeah. I texted it to you. But, um, we need to make sure, I mean, because we're having the whole meeting for that purpose, so we'll make sure that they're going to be here. I know he was out of town the week after I was there, but he said he'd be around after that. And. Yeah, well, at a minimum, you know, Becky's going to invite the business owners and we'll get some input from them, and Boy Scouts want to show up and, and participate in that, then great. But.
Yeah, because I went for some contributions, since they didn't pay any taxes, I went for a contribution to trails and everything, and they basically told me no. Me and Gabe went. Yeah, I thought, you know, since you don't pay any taxes, at least you can do is help the rest of the county with trail funding or something, since you're in recreation.
We should probably just do a letter inviting them and then email the letter to him, I sent you the email address too, but that way we can formally invite them to participate in it. And then we can send a copy of the letter also to the, to Becky, so she can forward it to the business community.
So who do you want to write the letter?
You.
Okay.
Because you are so good at, I really like the way you.
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure, and just like, do you want to send it from Root's office?
From us.
And when do you, do you want it to? But, I mean, if we do it this way, if we do it through Root, then she can sign it, and we can send it that way. Otherwise, we could fill in the agenda to get you guys to sign it. So you can authorize her to do that kind of stuff, I think Debbie used to write things to the commission.
Just, now we're looking expedient. I would rather have, I mean, so just, but I did actually invite him personally, I just didn't have the date yet.
I didn't know where they are, no, it's not, in the meeting today, I think he was supposed to be on here today, right?
Lucy, you're not on the agenda.
Well, he's on the agenda for, we postponed that till we found out about the 150.
Right, that was supposed to be, yeah, that was.
So that probably needs to be discussed at the next meeting.
Well, he's already taken care of it, with the commission, he, he's already, Bill Wells is an asset to the county when it comes to trail development. He went to the property owner that this trail was going to be built on and talked to the property owner. The property owner is going to donate that portion of the rail trail, and it's going to be valued at a certain, I think, $150,000, and that's going to be a contributor to the funding of the grant, so.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, taken care of, yeah, taken care of, so, but, you know, he called me the other day, I asked him, I would like for him to still come in, so, you know, be recognized for doing stuff like, he does stuff like that all the time.
Okay, what about the letter that we received from our attorney?
That's what I was talking about, we have to have a legal, an executive session with legal counsel.
I love the letter.
So hang on.
It just depends on when y'all want to do it, and we need to see if he's available.
Well, we might want to just try doing it when we talk about the covenant or whatever at the next meeting. I think the sooner, the sooner the better on that, on that issue.
Okay, so on the 20th?
So could we?
I'll, I'll send him a text now and see if he can.
Do you mean, do you respond to letter?
Yeah, so we do it all on the 20th.
I had a little sticky.
We can knock it all out at that time.
It's right here.
You got it, okay.
Did you make me a copy of that too? Did you make me a copy?
What time are we putting that on?
Yeah.
Well, just a, just a legal opinion on funding.
We got the, I mean, he gave us the legal opinion, it's just, we need.
It's just a matter of case from one pocket. Could you give me a copy of that, the, the?
I didn't print it for you, but it was in your email, would you like a printed copy?
Oh, please, I'd like a paper copy, please.
You two are killing something.
I'm sorry, we're old school, and I like to write on it. Well, I had some information I wanted to talk with on my tablet here, do you write on a piece of paper?
What time are we setting that, Amy?
Well, I'm putting that on Root's list, so, um, I mean, I could do the discussion and decision for this Stephen New at 11:30 and then do the other one at 11:45.
Yeah, I'd like to just have, like, I was looking at the agenda for the 7th. I'd like to have anything that's likely to go into executive session at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, for efficiency's sake.
7th is going to be. Oh, I know what I wanted to ask.
You want legal opinion?
Yeah, legal opinion regarding, um, funding.
Wow.
Do you see Virginia legalized or decriminalized, legalized simple possession? Okay. So are we on the, on the 7th? Are we doing all, do we need to do May's today, or?
You don't have to, no.
Okay, oh, we do May's, like on the.
I mean, the only thing I have a question about is this right here.
Which one?
So on, oops.
I'll tell you what I do want to put on there, go ahead.
Here, we have this meeting for development zoning.
I see it.
Regarding, but we had something that you brought up earlier, um, community meetings for the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
So should we put that there instead?
Now, Miss Taylor, you mentioned something about a month ago that I was so excited about, Miss Taylor? Yeah, I thought of Miss Taylor. That's, that's what he proud of. So excited about, I wish I'd have thought about it some more. Oh, that's the, you know, me and Anthony and John was just talking about it, the ankle placement of the commission.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can we put that on there?
Check this out, so, I need to tell you all this. Scott Stanton, who's the Deputy Chief Public Defender, he sent an email yesterday where Judge Ewing is having a meeting on the jail bill and, and.
Anthony and Mike.
Yeah, and, and that is a good place to discuss that, I think.
Okay.
And then get it back on the agenda, so let me see when that is, and then we'll put it on the agenda for.
Week, right?
Yeah. It's at 3:00 on April 13th, for anybody who wants to attend, I plan to attend it.
Okay, can you text it?
Yeah, and so, yeah, let's put that on the, on the 7th.
I've got it at 10:30.
Because I want to tell you, I think it's a great idea.
Oh, wait a minute.
That would also give us the ability to get to do more community work. Maybe, we should be able to do more community work. If the county, the county can, can, I think, direct them the way they should be directed, I mean, we need to bring the DRC in and all this discuss it. They'll say, hey.
I agree.
Okay, so you want that on the 7th?
They can do it in jail.
Do you want?
Do the community work.
This to be an hour?
Yeah.
For that, no.
30 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, so then what was the thing you just?
We were just talking about the, um, basically, it's to discuss the jail bill and possibly the commission and possible commission funding for home monitoring for indigent defendants. That's a good idea.
Clients, clients, okay.
Because that's the only way to do it. Yeah, well, that, there's a calculation.
It's 17, it's something, I've got it in my text, hold on, I'll look it up.
Why do we have both?
And then, yeah, and then look at the, you can compare, I mean, compare into four, six.
Do you need it? I mean, but do you want to keep that program under you? I mean, I remember that was a pain, I had a client who was on it. Felt sorry for your officer at the time.
That's why, that's why I said if you get that, you have a better idea. I need to think of that.
I don't think we can be required. So constant GPS, a $50 hookup and then $9 a day. But then, as Mike is discussing, you guys might not know, he also has a home monitoring that's not GPS, it's through the phone line. Is it now? So it's GPS, so it's, it sounds redundant, except for who's managing it. So can the policy be implemented where certain ones, a judge could refer to, what, your deputy? Okay. Yeah, it's discretionary is what it is, it's, and I'm not sure it's necessary, why are we having a program? Like, if they need help, you work, they work for you, like, they could call you and say, we need a deputy to help us with this or whatever. Okay.
I'm just trying to get a handle on which inmates or which defendants we use, Sheriff's Department for, which.
This is a great, this is a great issue to discuss at the jail meeting. This is a great, this is a great issue to discuss at the jail meeting. Yeah, it used to be that his program was a, where they had to get a phone line installed, and it was like old school. And then what they report has, had was GPS. And so I didn't know if, in part, that might have been because of connectivity or something, but I really never really fully understood why there was more than one option for the same type of supervision. Okay. Okay, yeah, it'd be good then.
You guys know that Judge Ewing is gonna do a family counseling?
Family Treatment Court.
Yeah, Family Treatment Court. If you're not, well, congratulations, he's gonna do a Family Treatment Court.
Nicholas County. It's an abuse and neglect oriented.
Yeah, and he's gonna put, um, the person in an office at the Sheriff's Department, and I wouldn't know, you know, I didn't know that you guys knew that or not.
He's talking about modifying his law library and.
Yeah, I know. I just, I just had to get Mike rolling, it's a Friday. But I, I think it's a good concept. Extra thing, I know, sorry.
Um, Anthony, I don't know if you're interested, but they're having their, um, Nicholas County's having the first graduation from it on, uh, May sixth at one thirty in the courtroom. I mean, it, if we're gonna have one, we might want to learn more about it. I, a friend of mine is a probation officer over it, and she's really good. I could get her to come meet with you if you want to talk to her. Her name's Stephanie Smith, but she's the Nicholas County, runs the Family Treatment Court program over there. She had been a CPS worker, I worked with her starting there, and now she's probation officer. I don't understand the whole, you know, and then some counties have veterans courts and all this. I don't, almost all of it has a nexus to mental illness, and I don't know why we're not looking at it from a. Well, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. He was selected by the Supreme Court for that, so.
Okay, so on this discussion and decision item for the, um, appointment of employees, I asked Sheriff Friddly who he wanted to appoint, and I had suggested Nick Hall, because he's head of the W Association. Mike thinks we need to talk to Chris Morehead for some reason, because he's over the Civil Service Board here. Oh, and Michael Taylor can make that meeting.
Okay.
He did respond to me.
Which day is that on the?
The twentieth. Twentieth.
But I, I, I mean.
Cause he was already down here.
This is a matter of appointing s- somebody to represent the civil servants, not, um, anything we're doing specifically with regard to that, so I'm not sure what input Chris would have. He would, might have input to things that we decide, or whatever that person brings to the board, but I'm not sure what his input would be to the board, I mean, other than through that person. Hey, Mike, when you said I should talk to Chris about, about whoever we appoint, do you think, I mean, I can see why that person would talk to Chris if there's something, you know, that comes up, or you.
I'm just saying, the civil service laws and all that stuff, I can't keep up with everything and the brother with that. We answered Scott Stanton, I just think it'd be nice just to say, hey, this is what you're doing.
Oh, yeah, well, I'll totally tell them, but what we need is an individual.
I'm not saying that he has to be on any board or anything, but I think just make sure that for civil service to keep them guys, I mean.
Oh, I agree.
You know, I don't want them to do something that jeopardizes them getting in trouble, because they and their, but you know what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
This is just a matter of them, it, it, it's been vet, because it's in state code that there has to be a civil, civil service representative on this board. And it's in state code that we have to have a county employee on the board. So I was just asking for a recommendation of who that person should be.
I just, I just, like I said, I can do with everything changes in that civil service stuff, I just was saying, you might want to talk to Chris, this makes, you know, and I know what to cut, I don't know that about.
I don't know what you're saying. I just need a, a body to come sit on the bar, the board.
You have, I said that to you earlier.
Who, what?
The one I said to, probably, your call.
Okay. Oh, you said that would be okay with you. That, I thought he was the best one, but just because he's the head of the Deputy Association, that he could get input or whatever. If you need to change it, we can always change it with a letter, so. And our county recommendation was that it be Joy, right, as our Chief of HR? Yeah. Okay, so on, uh, the Exhibit A, Agenda Item Seven, um, I move that we appoint, um, Joy Boyd as the, um, county employee who's a part of the Wage and Benefits Review Board, and then I move that we appoint, uh, Deputy Nick Hall as a civil service member of the Wage and Benefit Review Board.
A second. We've got a proper move in second, any discussion? All those in favor? Get passed.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second, second, I'm sorry. No problem, let's leave.